Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, everybody.
This TV screen will not work yet. Yeah, the other one's the one that'll be live.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight for the July 28th meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to ask everyone to join me first in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before public comment, recognize a couple of individuals in the audience today.
By all means.
I'd like to first ask Mr. Jeff Colby, Director of Public Works, Mr. John Sawyer, Deputy Chief of Yarmouth Fire Department, and Chief Phil Simonian to come to the podium to discuss a traffic rescue by Scott Angel, and we'd like to recognize Mr. Angel for his heroic duty on the roadways just a few weeks back.
Very good. Jeff, floor's yours.
Thank you, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Scott's working with the fire division. He's stepped right in as a hard worker, anxious to do a good job, and the traffic accident that happened last month is an example of...
Jeff switches off.
Oh, Jeff, hit on the...
Yeah, make sure you're in the green. Make sure it's green, Jeff.
There's a button?
All right. I think we're green now.
Yeah, you're green.
Good. All right, I'll start again. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. It's exciting to honor Scott Angel tonight. He did an excellent job in the line of duty when he was out doing some public work, some roadside maintenance work. He's a relatively new employee with the town of Yarmouth, but has fit in very well and stepped right up and has done an excellent job, very hard worker, and was just in the right place at the right time to take action, and I think that's the important aspect here, is he was able to take action when the time weren't, and I'm happy to turn that over to my colleagues who can talk a little bit more about that.
And nothing we change is the matter. I actually responded to that call. We had a... It was a busy day for Yarmouth Fire, like most days, and we were all up on the highway for a possible car fire, and I don't know if Scott realizes why it took us so long to get there, because the first ones to get there were all staff vehicles, because we can... We're more nimble and quick. Unfortunately, we don't have water and foam and stuff to fight the fire, but Scott had already taken care of that part of the problem for us, so we just dealt with a car fire, which is pretty intense. Could we ask Scott to come forward? On June 16th, 2020, Mr. Angel was working for the town of Yarmouth at the intersection of Old Town House Road and Forest Road. Mr. Angel witnessed a vehicle leave the road, go into the group of trees, and strike... striking a tree shortly thereafter the vehicle caught fire. Acting selflessly and without hesitation, Mr. Angel quickly went to assist the driver. Mr. Angel removed the driver from the damaged and now burning vehicle and moved him to an area of safety and awaited medical assistance. Had not for Mr. Angel's quick actions, this accident car fire would have had a much more tragic results. The Yarmouth Fire Department recognizes your courage and willingness to act without regard for your own safety. You are a true asset to the town of Yarmouth and the Yarmouth community. Thank you for helping your fellow man, and we are very proud to recognize your actions. Sincerely, Chief Philip G. Simonian.
Yes.
Scott, in recognition of your valuable contributions in saving a life or another, we'd like to recognize you formally with a certificate of achievement. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
(applause)
If you ever decide to change careers, I'd love to have it.
Thank you. Scott, do us a favor and come before the board, because I want to let you know that at our last meeting, we also, as a full board, recognized your significant accomplishments and adopted this proclamation that basically says, "Be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and gratitude for the lifesaving efforts you demonstrated on June 16th, and that this citation duly signed by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen on this day of June 30th is a tribute to you and your fine work." So, thank you. Congratulations. I'll present this to you.
Thanks a lot.
Your applause is sufficient, right?
(applause) Thank you.
Can I just say a couple of things not related?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. There's been a very busy summer going on right now. I just wanted to do a shout out to the partnership that we have here. It's all part of the chain of life here in lifesaving between the lifeguards, the DNR boats, the Highway Department that's on the road. We all work really, really well together, and this was obvious yesterday in Lewis Bay. We had a rescue, the DNR boat, J-48, thank God, was in Lewis Bay and made a rescue and met our ambulance at Inglewood Beach and evaluated someone that fell out of a boat and came in as a possible drowning for us. It's been a very, very busy summer. We're also going to come back before you at another meeting to recognize two lifeguards at Seagull Beach as well that made a save there. They actually saved the person's life from drowning, so that'll be at a future meeting. But thank you very much. I just wanted to formally recognize the other town departments and how well we all work together, PD as well.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much, Chief. The next item that we have is an item related to Mr. Court, and I'm going to recognize Jeff Colby once again. Jeff, please take the podium.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director, again. This is a bittersweet moment. It's good to recognize people, especially in this particular case, towards the end of a very distinguished career. Dick Court has done an excellent job for this community. I don't think it's stretched to say he's one of the best public employees that we have, always putting in 110% in everything that he does, goes above and beyond any time of day, night. His responsibilities in his time with the town of Yarmouth grew, and we continued to add responsibilities, and he willingly accepted those and did an excellent job in everything we asked him to do. When I started, he was the Facility Superintendent and was promoted to Building and Ground Superintendent in charge of not only the public buildings, but the public spaces, the parks, the cemeteries, and has done an excellent job in doing so. He recently gave us his notice that his intent to retire, and so I think it's great that the board is going to recognize him for his lengthy service for the town of Yarmouth, and I believe his wife and son are here to accept that on his behalf.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Before I ask Pam and Bob to step forward, what I'd like to do is to read the proclamation that the board has put forth and adopted, and it's signed by the entire board, and let me read it out loud. Whereas Richard Court has served proudly as a dedicated member of the Yarmouth Department of Public Works for over 14 years, culminating in his position as Superintendent of Building and Grounds while serving our community, Superintendent Richard Court became widely known for his service to the town of Yarmouth. Whereas Superintendent Court began his career as a Buildings and Grounds Craftsman in 2006, he moved up the ranks within the department from Building and Grounds Craftsman to Facility Superintendent to currently serving as Building and Ground Superintendent. Whereas Superintendent Court has attended numerous specialized training courses in his fully qualified, licensed, unrestricted construction supervisor, and whereas Superintendent Court has saved the town of Yarmouth hundreds of thousands of dollars with his expert knowledge of public construction projects and exceptional hard work. Some of the significant projects include renovation of Town Hall and replacement of windows at numerous town buildings and countless other renovations, both big and small. Whereas Superintendent Court has proven an exceptional team player for the town of Yarmouth, going above and beyond, working with every single division in town. The town of Yarmouth is better and a stronger organization because of Dick. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen are extremely grateful and today officially recognize Dick Court for his career dedication to benefit the residents of the town of Yarmouth on this 28th day of July 2020. That reads the proclamation. I'm going to ask if there are any other comments that my fellow board members would like to make, starting with Tracy.
Dan, did you want to say?
No, yeah, no, go ahead. I'll go last.
I think the proclamation speaks for itself, and the word craftsman was said, and Dick was a craftsman. I met him several times in his time here, and it's people like Dick that make me proud to sit here. He does so many great things for the town, and it's really about the people, as I said to his wife right before the meeting. So, it's nice to recognize somebody's years of service, and I'm grateful for him, so thank you.
If I'm late, Mark. Yes, so if I could, then I'd direct this to Pam and Bob and to all the folks in Yarmouth. Dick was one of the first employees that I met here when I came to town, and one of the things that I valued the most about my friendship and work relationship with Dick was that in this short time that I've been here, we've been through some pretty significant events, and through it all, his calm demeanor and his wit would completely make you rest assured that everything was going to be okay, and he would always, no matter what it was, wrap it up with, say, "Boss, don't worry. I got this," and that's forever what I'm going to remember about Dick. So, I thank you for coming here tonight. He's a wonderful, wonderful friend, colleague, and longtime employee of the town, and we're going to miss him dearly.
Definitely. Mike?
I agree with everything Tracy and Dan said. I remember before I was a selectman, when I was on the Recreation Commission, and things couldn't get done for one reason or another, and Pat Armstrong would come and say, "Well, don't worry. I got Dick Court. He's going to do it." The thing that stands out probably the most admirable part of the citation that Mark read is the part about being a team player. He cut through the red tape. He wasn't concerned about whose responsibility this was or whose responsibility that was. When he was needed, he was more than willing and always responded, and that's what team players do, and that's why I think he's going to be so much missed and so fondly remembered by the people, not only in this board, but everybody that worked in Town Hall and the public as well.
Very good. Pam, Bob, would you please step forward? On behalf of the entire board, let me just present you with this proclamation.
He really enjoys working here, and he loved everybody because you all are team players, and he spoke very highly of everybody.
Certainly did. He made us all better. He did. That's what a great team player does, is he makes everybody that he works with and supports, he makes us all better, and we... He's family to us, and let him know we love him, and we wish him the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank... Shake your hand, but obviously in this era, or give you a hug, you know? I've been really challenged lately by not being able to give anybody a hug.
He really wanted to be here tonight, but he's going to be excited to do this.
I know.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Well, again, tell him we love him and wish him the best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming here.
Okay, let's proceed with the rest of the agenda, starting with public comments. Would anybody like to seek recognition? Ms. Moore?
Yeah. I don't know where the light is, but...
It's on, I think.
It's on.
It's on?
Your light.
Okay. On top there, okay. So, congratulations, Mr. Chairman. I just... I'm curious whether you may have some rules that will pertain to public comment or anything like that that are different from what preceded, for example?
I think my rules will be try to stick with the requirements under the open meeting law. As a board, I think it's not appropriate to engage in a dialogue and a discussion as is required for most... For all boards, it's to take... This is an opportunity for you to express an opinion or concern, so my hope is that...
So, there won't be time... Very strict time constraints?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, the first question I have is how did the company that is now in the drive-in space there, how did that company come to the town's attention?
Let me just briefly say, at a prior meeting, we had a proposal before us along with another one.
But even both the companies, how did they come to the town's attention?
They submitted unsolicited proposals.
That's what I... In other words, it wasn't our economic development people or the committee or the board or whatever. That's what I was driving at. I hope that in the future, when they are up for, you know, their budgets, that these... Especially that department, the Economic Development Department, will be asked to submit a very clear, you know, and detailed explanation of what exactly they did throughout the year, what the upshot was, and what have you, because, in other words, it had nothing to do with them going out and looking for somebody. These people presented themselves of their own accord, and anyway, that's... Now, the other thing I have is I think some oblique comment was made, well, maybe not so oblique. I guess there are rumors about Harwich possibly leaving the tri-town project or something like that, so I'm hoping that this board has already decided what they will do if that were to happen. We simply cannot continue only with the town of Dennis in the future, considering our experience with the school district and stuff like that, that there won't be any... We just need to go off on our own. In fact, when you think about the numbers that were presented by Rich in terms of any savings that would be forthcoming, at least on the first phase, I believe it was something like a $5 million on a $130 million project. I think for us to have our own say is more than worth it, and especially in view of the history that we have had with the town of Dennis, so I hope that that will be almost immediate, to just get out of that project. I see we're going to have some new solar panel installations. Is that correct?
That'll be... That's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah. All I'm going to say at this point, I don't know who the company is, but I hope it isn't the one that was installing the ones up here on this... On the roof here, and that they didn't make any unfounded, you know, promises and what have you, which absolutely did not work out with this particular company, and maybe more so with the person who was pushing that project. I don't know, but you have to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I mean, we're going to have to pay for this, right? It's not like one of those where when the schools were doing it supposedly abracadabra, and they were not going to have to pay anything. It will be installed.
When... Excuse me. When we bring the item up, we'll give some background to explain that.
Oh, okay. All right, and Bruce is not here, is he? Because I have a... I had a question for him with regard to the yoga classes, but that's okay. We'll just have to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for public information, with respect to the drive-in property, the goal has been to have an RFP process, and that is the game plan going forward for next year. Okay, anybody else from the public seek recognition? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the CEVAC lease for the Council on Aging PV Project Lease Approval.
Mr. Chairman, election update. I've asked Ekingtown Clerks, who are we going to be? Give you an update on that?
Okay, Sue, you get the floor.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. This is going to be a trying time for the town of Yarmouth in particular. Not just do we have the state primary on September 1st, but we have our special election. We worked very diligently with our last election with absentee ballot applications. We sent out about 4,100 applications through the department. Our recovery rate back wasn't as great as we had hoped, and we... Let me just get you those numbers. We sent out 4,161 ballots that were not returned, over 2,000, so we had a little bit of a net loss there for folks not being able to vote, whether they didn't receive them, or they're less than the mail, or they just chose at that time not to vote or not use the absentee ballot, just go directly to the precincts. So, with that said, we are sending out the same 4,100 absentee ballots to our voters for our special election. That's the first and foremost thing that we're going to do. In addition to the state sending out our little postcards that we all got to vote early, currently we have just under 2,000 of those in-house getting ready to be stuffed and put back onto the mail. So, we're going to have some pretty good results. I'm hoping that people will come out to vote for the primary in person or vote by paper, so our numbers for this election might be higher than we had anticipated, pretty much like we did in June. I think folks used those ballots versus coming out that normally might not have come to vote for an election. We had 17% of our voters come out or vote by paper in June. Traditionally, over the last four or five years, we've always had between 11%, maybe one year we had 12%, but overall it was about 11%. So, the voters, I think, now with the vote being put... For the paperwork coming directly to them to be able to sign it and send the card back, get their ballot, vote in their own time and privacy, and send it back to us, we may see greater numbers. So, if you have any questions, our policy that we're going to use this year or this term around is, again, the 4,100 ballots are going to go out, hopefully in the next 10 days, so that gives people four different options to vote. They're absentee if they have it on file with us already. We'll automatically get a ballot. The early vote, where they can get their ballot, receive it, vote the ballot, and return it to us. We have early voting scheduled from 10:00 to 2:00 the last week of the month, so they can physically walk into the building, vote their ballot, and it'll be sealed, and they'll be done. And then the other one is the day of the election to physically go to the precincts. So, we've given the voters a lot of opportunity to get out there and pass their... Pass their votes. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll start with Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, can you go through the difference again between the absentee and the early voting ballots?
Sure. Absentee ballot gets processed and mailed to you where your mailing address is or where you prefer it to be mailed.
Now, that'd be in the local election?
Both.
Both?
Both, for the state.
So, the state will mail theirs independently?
We have to do all the mailing.
You'll mail them both?
We'll mail them both.
All right, so in the September election, you'd be mailing the state ballot and the local ballot?
Correct. They have to be mailed separately. They can't go in the same envelope because they're two different types of races. One's a local and one's the state.
Okay.
So, folks are going to get two envelopes, two ballots, and I'm sure they're going to...
Do they have to make that request on the state level as well for you to give the both ballots? Because the state is sending out postcards.
Correct.
And then the town has already sent out a card saying, "Do you want to vote absentee in all the elections?"
Correct.
Now, let me ask you this question. Suppose somebody already made a request to the town that they wanted an absentee ballot for all elections, and they ignored the postcard that the state sent?
Mm-hmm.
Would they still get the two ballots mailed by you?
Yes, they will.
So, there's a redundancy there?
There is.
Okay.
There is. The difference between an absentee ballot allows the voter to take that absentee ballot and vote it and mail it to you if they choose, or present it at the polls and vote live. The early voting that is being promoted is you vote, and your vote is cast. It's cast, it's going to get counted. You can't retract an early voted ballot. A lot of folks will... Are more concerned about, "I didn't sign that," so every... The front envelope on every one of those has the signature of the voter, and those all have to be kept for 22 months. So, if someone comes forward in a couple of months and says, "I didn't vote. Why am I listed as voting whatever party?" We can pull that envelope and say, "This is the signature we have on file."
Okay, so the one that the state's sending, that's for absentee voting?
The one the state is sending is for early voting.
Early voting.
It is for the primary ballot only.
Okay, so that's early voting.
That's early voting.
And even if you get one, you can show up and vote live?
Not if you return the ballot.
No, if you don't vote it, you could still show up and vote?
Not on an early vote, absentee only.
On the absentee.
If they have returned the card to us, we will issue them a ballot. If that ballot gets returned, it gets recorded in our state system, so they can't take another ballot.
Right, but if they don't vote, if they get a ballot but they don't vote it?
Then they can go.
Then they can vote live if they wish.
The reports that we send to the precincts will have an AV or an EV next to it. If it's checked off, it means that we have received a ballot in that capacity.
Correct.
So that they can't vote then. They can vote provisional.
But if somebody receives those and misplaces them or can't find them or just decides they don't want to do that, they can still vote live as long as they didn't vote?
Absolutely, absolutely. Or they can come in here on the early voting, as long as they're not checked off as having received a ballot.
Yeah, but once you do the early vote, that's it. Game's over, right?
Yes.
You can't make any changes.
The only small thing the state has done is allowing us to actually proceed with processing those ballots the day before the election and keeping them secure, rather than everything being done on the day of the election where there's... You'd be hours and hours trying to get it all done, but the process is going to work. I'm very confident this is going to work. It's made a lot of work in September, which is going to make November a little bit easier, because we won't have the second election. We'll have just that one ballot to deal with.
Right.
State's intention is to send the ballots out the second week of October. State's intention is to send the ballots out the second week of October to anyone we have, we have put in this system that wants all ballots, so they will be mailed automatically. They'll get the ballots earlier.
All right, so the information you got, you sent to the state?
Yes.
As well as their own independent system of sending out cards?
They, they took our database, took everyone's database in the towns, and they took anybody that was registered to vote for July 1, and they got the mailing card.
Okay.
Our system is pretty much up to date.
Some people are confused, because they thought they were all set when they responded locally, and now they're getting the card, and they're going, "Well, what's, what's the problem with the town? They didn't, they didn't get it right," which is not the case. There's an overlap there.
Correct. The town was proactive in our June election to send out the applications, to send out 10,800 letters with two applications to every household that was on our list, and that's when we received the 4,000 back. That's tremendous. We usually probably only have about 300 to 400 absentee ballots that we deal with in, in a local election. So it's, I think it's bringing people's attention out to the voting system, what we can do for them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Be a quiz following the meeting, Mike. Tracy?
No, thank you for your work on this. Mike asked my, my question.
I have some phenomenal workers in the department, and we've retrieved some of our retirees to come in and to assist us. Envelope sticking, label sticking is very time-consuming, but we had great people, and they're happy doing it.
No, we very much appreciate all the work. We know there's a lot of extra work, and so we very much appreciate all the effort that's going into this.
I like, I love the people we work with, we're good.
We let everybody know we appreciate all their efforts.
I will, I will.
Thank you.
I will say that I get to witness it on an everyday basis, and the amount of hours, it is a well-honed machine they're operating up there.
We're doing our best. And if I can say one thing about our last mailing, which was the 4,000, the South Yarmouth Post Office was outstanding, and they need to be recognized. We brought our mail over there, and it was a West South Port, they did not send it to Providence to come back. They did, they took care of it right away. So our people got their ballots within a day.
Is that information that should not be publicly disclosed?
I, it was nice that he did it.
That's great, that's terrific.
They're good, period. I've dealt with them for the last 40 years with legal stuff, they're, they're very good operation.
We were bringing bins in, and bins in, and they kept on saying, "Oh no, oh no."
Yeah.
But we'll do it again.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Sure.
Well, yeah, what I'd like to suggest is, if you do have a question of the town clerk, do you? If you do, maybe you could have that outside the room, socially distanced, if that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on.
Mr. Chairman, there's two warrants, the election warrants, one for the state and one for the local, because you, as you know...
Is it in red?
Yeah, there should be in the signature file.
Is it here?
I just wanna make sure everybody signs off on that.
We need to sign off on that today.
Yes, you do.
Don't we have to have a vote?
We make a motion to approve the ballots that is presented to you tonight, for both the state election and for the selectman term.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Got one right here.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Oh, it's here on the top, okay.
There you go, very good. Anything, anything else, Dan, with respect to the...
No, I, like I said, I, I think to Sue's point, I mean, the team is just phenomenal, the amount, the volume of work is astonishing in front of the clerks. And that's not just here, it's across all of our towns, and, you know, in a, in a system that doesn't get a lot of attention, it's been performing very well here, I would say. So I wanna thank Sue and her team for all her efforts.
Thank you for your support.
There you go, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Next item. Dan, do you wanna say something to sort of kick us off on the...
Yeah, so this is a project, yeah, I believe Maria Marasco is here, and perhaps Liz Argo is here as well, yep, I didn't see them come in, but, so this is another lease project that CEVEC has brought forward to us. These are rooftop-related leases, this is a project that will be slated for the Council on Aging Facility. So I, I think, Liz, is this the fifth round?
Yes.
Yeah, so how many rounds have we participated in, maybe four here?
Actually, you're, you're participating in two rounds.
Yep.
But you've been a CEVEC off-taker since the beginning.
Okay, so most recently, you recall, we did a couple of fire stations. That was probably two years ago, or 18 months ago now?
Yep, they went live in December.
Yep, and then we have a ground mount, we're working with CEVEC at the 50 Workshop Road location, so this is the latest project, and we're glad to see, and there's a savings to the town here, so...
Oh, yeah, savings to the town of about 70, I'm sorry, $26,000 annually.
We like that.
And that's gonna be, I'm gonna split some of it on the roof of the senior center, and it's powered directly to the senior center, and it will also have a battery component.
And Liz, if you could, yeah, could you, the battery component is new for our project, so if you could bring the board up to data as to what the battery does for us?
So all PV projects going forward are including battery components now because...
Is that mic's on green?
Oh, there's a button, unattached, yeah.
Thank you. You weren't being picked up, so, thank you, Dan.
So all of the projects that we can add battery to, we are, because everybody knows that solar is intermittent. When the sun is not shining, your solar is not creating energy, and if you can add a battery, you are basically making it a much more efficient addition to our electric system, to our grid. So in fact, we're adding batteries to any projects we can going forward, we're gonna look at doing it retroactively as well, so projects that are, for instance, the Harwich cap landfill, PV all over the cap landfill there, we will look at adding battery to that in the next few years. And in fact, the state has a, an incentive program called the SMART program, and if your project is over 500 kilowatts in size, you must add a battery. It's being heavily pushed by the state, because it's really the way to make solar much more of a component for our grid.
Who funds the battery?
Say it again?
Who funds the battery?
It's part of the RFP, so when the, when the bid goes out, it's bid this with a battery, bid it without a battery, and generally, the addition of the battery is very low money, and we've done the analysis, CEVEC's done the analysis, to show what you're gonna save over the course of even the first year pays for the additional cost of the battery like that. So the battery is, it's not adding any cost at all to the towns, while it's adding some revenue stream. We're hoping that the program that the Cape Light Compact is bringing forward, which is called Connected Solutions, is a demand response program, and when we have our batteries able to play in that market and be registered in that market, there will be a payment from the Cape Light Compact, which will flow through to the towns.
Very good. Anything else to present to the board?
No, just, we're here for execution of the lease. CEVEC has already signed a power purchase agreement. As in most of your installations with CEVEC, we are the contracted party with the developer. We then contract with the town through an intergovernmental agreement, which also, you will need to approve that too, Dan, the IGA, and that's the power sales that we've contracted for with the developer, passes right through, through the IGA to the town. Like always, there is a, a small CEVEC adder, in this case, it's three-quarters of a penny. Back in the old days, it was a penny, for some places, DY pays a penny and a half, it's down to three-quarters of a penny, and that gets added to the cost of doing business that we pay the developer.
Very good.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Tracy?
I just wanna ask about the senior center's roof, if it's been looked at structurally, what, what's the status of...
It hasn't been engineered, the engineering company has not looked at it structurally. That is gonna cost the developer money, so they, the roof, it's, it's typical of the routine, is to get the contract signed, and then the developers can start paying, spending their money. But they're not gonna go out on a limb and spend their money before then. They've walked it, they've looked at it, they know that it looks sound, but they have not brought in a, an engineer that can stamp the plans yet.
So how long does a roof, how, what's the life expectancy have to be for it to be adequate?
We, we don't wanna put PV onto a roof that's got shingles that are over 10 years old. Sometimes if it's 11 years old, and the developer looks at the roof and goes, "Boy, these shingles are great, they're obviously 30-year shingles," and they're just at the beginning of their life, because the PV actually extends the life of shingles, because it prevents UV from going and attacking the shingles, it prevents as much wind and so on, but our rule of thumb is 10 years, want it to be, not over 10 years old, the roof over 10 years old. And then structurally, of course, they're gonna look at the rafters for the bolt down and all of that kind of stuff.
Okay. So ASolar is the same, I see, as with the fire department?
Yeah.
So we haven't had any problems, they're financially sound?
Correct.
Okay. And so you said the fire department's already up and running?
Mm-hmm.
So the lag time with the tying in with the electrical company is now shortened?
No. No, we still struggle with Eversource being not as responsive and fast-moving as we would like. We wish they would increase their staff, so that they could move things more quickly, but...
How long was the request time?
A smaller project tends not to be as much of an issue. It's those big projects where we start getting headlines in the newspapers about how long it's taking for Eversource to move things along.
What was the, what was the wait time for the fire department, just out of curiosity?
Well, it would have been, the wait time would have been the interconnection services agreement, and back in 2018, there wasn't as much activity with Eversource, because what used to be the incentive program was called the SREC program, that was being phased out, and the SMART program was being written, and so there was very little activity. The, those, that round three, those, those projects that we brought forward with round three had very little competition at Eversource, so there wasn't much lag time for the round three projects. We're suffering some lag time now. There may be lag time for this project, for instance.
So with the, it says potential savings of 26,000, what, what would the worst-case scenario be?
Well, you have a bottom line, so there's a guaranteed annual output, and there's an estimated annual output. This is built on the, the estimated annual output, the guaranteed annual output is 20% less, so 20%, you could really, literally just, 20% less of the 26 grand, but...
So it falls back to that, if it should fall underneath that, or...
If it falls underneath that, they have to compensate you. Now, most, you have to keep in mind that the developers are, want these projects to produce as much power as possible, that's where they're making their money. So it does not benefit the developers at all to have a, an inefficient solar system. They want it to be as fully developed and maintained as possible, because their whole financial structure is based on kilowatt-hours of production, and so is your payment.
Mm-hmm, great, that's a good thing. Do you think that we'll get to a point where it's, we'll get to a max build-out that they wanna buy in terms of kilowatt-hours? Or do you foresee solar...
Yes, there, there are caps. For instance, out in Western Massachusetts, the cap has been reached, National Grid had a, because there's so many huge solar projects out in Western Massachusetts, the cap was reached. They're fighting right now to get that cap lifted, because of course, the state has its mandates to build and, and keep building, so we can phase out our fossil fuels. But, but in the Eversource territory, the caps have not been reached, but there are caps, definitely there are caps. That's something that the governor, for instance, looks at every year. Do we raise the caps, or do we just let the, let it just end? No more solar development. And of course, historically, the governor has raised the caps to keep solar development going forward.
And you see a reduction in fossil fuels?
Oh, yes.
In this state?
Yes. Massachusetts is a leader.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's great. Mike?
Liz, on the cap, assuming it's regional, right? You mentioned Western Mass, what are we, in Southeastern Mass?
We are.
Is that where the cap is?
Southeastern Massachusetts, Eversource territory, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I was looking at these numbers, the 26, 754, and at 20 years, that comes to 535,000. The figure mentioned here is 696, is a difference of 161,000. Can you explain that?
Yeah, there's an, an add, there's an increase, because the price of electricity has been steadily going up, and all of the projections are that it will continue to go up, and your benefit is based on what's called the net metering credit value, and we've seen that go from 12 cents to 17 cents, and so there's an escalator built into the pro forma.
Okay, I remember you talking about that net metering credit before.
Yeah, the magic net metering credit.
I don't, I don't remember all the particulars, but I do remember you talking about it.
But we, we do a training session every year, called a survivor's training session, because it's so complex, and your town employees and your volunteers are all trying to handle it, so we provide a training session, and if people can, can figure it out, we give them a survivor's certificate, because it is complex.
I noticed that the lease, in the number, you're using a, a period of 20 years, is that about the useful life of that apparatus, more or less, or why, why is that, why is that the period of time that you're using for this lease, 20 years?
Two reasons, and the main reason is because the industry has developed a financial profile that calls for a 20-year, a way that they can pay, pay it off, and keep it affordable for you, so that's pretty much the standard. I mean, when I started, there was a 10-year lease for, for some of the PV projects on the roofs of, for instance, Harwich Elementary has a 10-year lease, which we're looking, it's coming up. But generally, it's 20 years, and in fact, right now, the SMART program requires it be a 20-year lease.
So what typically happens at the end, with municipalities at the end of 20 years? Do they, like, extend the lease and just leave the equipment intact, or what generally happens?
Well, don't forget, we haven't gotten there yet, nowhere have we gotten there.
Mm-hmm.
It's really nascent, we think it's been around forever, but I remember being here to talk you up on the, doing the solar on this town hall, and that was, what are you talking about? That wasn't so long ago, so... But we have seen, for instance, some solar panels that Jimmy Carter put in at Beverly High School, up in, up Northern Shore, and they, they were putting in six, in the 60s, they're still there. And what they have to do is replace the inverters, which are, is the equipment that, that makes it from DC to AC current, they wear out because of all the heat that they're handling. But the solar panels have no moving parts, they just sit there and do their thing. There is a slight declining in their efficiency, but it's 0.5% per year. So, you know, nobody generally takes the solar panels off after five years and puts, puts in a more efficient solar panel, because they, they work just fine. They're, they're warranted for 20 years, and then they just keep on ticking after that. Some of them are warranted for 25 years.
You, you talked about Yarmouth Town Hall, and this question's been asked of me before by just members of the public, and the question was, is there any way of monitoring the performance level of these panels to see whether or not the savings that were projected are in fact realized by the town?
So you used to have a monitor up in the front foyer when you came in, showing the production, that was, you know, back when we had George, yeah, our friend George. But the, one of the, the issues with, where we feed behind the meter, which is when we become your power plant, if you don't have the history to know what you used to spend, all you know is what you, what you're spending now. So what we can do for about $1,000 is we can add a meter that would show you what your electric use is, because that piece of it is frankly, your electric use is, because all you're seeing is what you're, what's left over for you to pay. You're not seeing the savings, there's no place that it comes up for you. So if, it's a little bit frustrating for everybody, but you, you have to go back to your history to see it. Now, in, in our reports to you every year, when we come in, we do our, our annual presentation, all of our projects are getting counted as a savings to you, and we can do the math. We can say, okay, if your electricity here is 20 cents, and, and you're only paying, and in your case, for, for that one up on the top of the roof, here it's probably 4 cents you're paying per kilowatt hour, so your delta there is 16 cents per kilowatt hour, and, and we know your usage, we got your total electric usage with the savings, and we can do the math and say, you know, you saved however many dollars, and that's what we do at the end of the year, to give you your full production value, your savings value.
Okay.
There's no meter that is saying, "Oh, you just saved this kilowatt hour, oh, you Oh, you just saved this kilowatt hour. It can be added, however.
Yeah, I guess there's some level of, on certain people's parts, and I'm not speaking for myself, but just public input that I've received over time. There's been some skepticism about, you know, are we really saving this money?
I would suggest we go to the archives and pull out an electric bill from those years. And in fact, it may be that CEVAC has one. And you just do the comparison. What were you paying for a full year's worth of electricity back in, that must have been 2009? I think we put that, those on. And look at the, do the comparison. It'll be kilowatt hours, not price, because of course, your prices have gone way up. So you have to look at what you saved in kilowatt hours, not dollars.
Just to follow up on that. So last, starting last year, we started participating in a program as part of Green Communities where all of the meter reads and for both gas and electric are inputted into a database that can generate a report as it relates to your consumption. So that one of the benchmarks we have to meet with Green Communities is a 20% over five years. But as a, for instance, because I got a report that I'll get to you in the fall, we just had, I forget how many fixtures, but hundreds of light fixtures across the town buildings, including all the light fixtures here, replaced with LEDs. And also, if you notice on the wall now, we've got digital thermostat controllers. And the technicians are programming those up. So for the first time, we'll be able to have a set point on these controllers that are at all the different univentilator points and control the heating and cooling of the building. In the past, it used to be just go hit the knob, turn it on. I want it more, I want it more colder, I want it hotter. And then if you walked away and left it running overnight, it'll rumble all night long. But very soon, through computer technology, we'll be able to monitor the entire situation here. So this building, as a, for instance, the consumption year over year will get much better because of the improvements that we just literally have wrapped up within the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, to Mike's point, it's, it is, we've added so much. And our electricity budget continues to increase, so...
It's unfortunate, but so much of what, the improvements are necessary, absolutely necessary. But when we, just going through modern life, everybody's now getting a computer. And those computers are getting, they now have more memory. They're just more of an energy hog. So modems are energy hogs, all the communications devices we use. So we're, the technologies that are bringing us forward into the future use more energy. And then we're going to, of course, be converting to electric vehicles. And that's going to use more electricity, too. And we're pushing to have buildings change from heating oil to electric, too. So, yeah, the electric consumption will continue to rise, which is why we need to keep going forward with renewables.
Okay. Dan, we...
So we need two motions. One of them would be a motion to approve the lease agreement between Alliance CVEV LLC and the town of Yarmouth for a period of 20 years and to authorize the town administrator to sign on your behalf.
And this is, you said this has been reviewed by...
Yep.
Council? There's nothing different, really, in these than the previous ones?
No.
I'd make that motion, but it's CBEC, CEVAC.
I'll second it and commend counsel for reading this.
Okay.
So...
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Then the second one is the intergovernmental net energy power sales agreement between CEVAC and the town of Yarmouth.
Is that in here?
Yes, it is. We have a motion to...
And allow the town administrator to sign on your behalf.
So it's a motion to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign. You see it, Tracy? Mike, did you have it?
What's that?
This is, I'm assuming this agreement as well, town council has reviewed.
Yes.
And indoors.
Did anybody, did Tracy move on that?
No, I was looking to see the, I didn't see it in here. Do you know what page it's on? Sorry.
It's like the last time.
Is that the intergovernmental net energy power sales agreement? With CEVAC and the town of Yarmouth?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it starts on about page...
650.
70, yeah, 70. It's why it takes a little while to find it. It's on...
It's one of the bigger packets we've...
It's on page 70.
Got it.
Okay, so I will move that agreement, the intergovernmental net energy power sales agreement between CEVAC and the town of Yarmouth. And further, that the town administrator should be authorized, shall be authorized to sign on behalf of the town of Yarmouth.
Is it with the town of Yarmouth or is it with...
Yarmouth.
The Alliance? Okay.
CEVAC, and this is between you and us, so that we, everything that we're getting from the developer flows right to you.
Okay. Second?
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Any other matters that we need to address?
And did you have a memorandum of lease there as well?
Yeah, there's a, I have the lease agreement.
No, it would be a memorandum of lease as well.
Is that to be, to be recorded?
Exactly.
Yeah, that I don't have.
I don't know if that's in here or not. Let me, let me check here. I'm only on page 88.
I'm saying it's not there, so we should just prepare to take that up again.
We can put it on the 11th. You have it all generated, ready to go?
Yeah, I think I sent it, but I think there's just so much...
There was some glitching with the computer. Transmetal.
Okay. Are we done with this particular topic?
We put on a consent agenda, we don't...
Oh, we can do that, yeah, next week, yeah, or the 11th. Well, if you, just resend it, we'll put on the consent agenda.
Wait a minute. It's already approved by inclusion, I think, because the memorandum of lease is on page 101. It's an exhibit to the lease agreement.
It's Exhibit D?
Exhibit D.
Yeah.
We approved the lease agreement. What you're saying is that we've our...
Yeah, I think the memorandum goes with it. But maybe just as a matter of caution, we should make a motion to approve that. I don't think it's necessary, but hey, overkills sometimes is a way to go.
Okay. So why don't we just take that up now?
So I will move to, let me see, who signs that? The memorandum of lease, is that Dan? Town of Yarmouth, yeah. To authorize Dan to sign on behalf of the town of Yarmouth, the memorandum of lease, and to take any and all necessary action related there, too. How's that?
That sounds perfect.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. I think that is the end of that agenda item.
Correct? It is, on that time.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We'll be back soon for our annual report, so...
Okay.
Thank you, Liz.
Let us know when you're ready. All right. Now, the next item on the agenda, if I'm reading my agenda correctly, is water department.
Yep.
Update.
That is Mr. Colby.
Are we going to have with us tonight our new water and wastewater superintendent?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Lori, welcome.
Thank you.
We also have Kirsten Ryan, our water consultant. You can come and join us in socially distance with us up here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. It's green. We're good to go. This format you have in your packet was a memo updating water activities. It's very similar to what I presented to the board four or five times now previously. As we get input from the board with these various presentations, it's a great format to add components or take away components. So I'll continue to track those for update purposes for the board next time we're before you.
I think that's a great idea, to keep the same format so it makes it easier for us to track.
Absolutely. And I will add things as, I'll take notes as we're talking tonight and add things as you'd like for updates in the future. The first item on here is our water, wastewater superintendent. At my last update with you, the board authorized the posting of that position. And I'm happy to introduce you to Lori Rosala, who is here today. She started June 1st, a great addition to the team. She has over 15 years of water and wastewater experience. She previously served as the water and sewer superintendent in the town of Franklin. She'll be a valuable member of the team in order to move forward our wastewater planning efforts that we're all engaged in, as well as the many water projects that we have that are underway. We'll talk about a number of them coming up as well. And so we're excited to have her as a member of the team. In fact, I've heard very high recommendation from her, or for her, from my peers, as well as many consultants that we interact with. So I think we've got a great asset to our team and excited to have her on board. The next update that I have for the board is with regard to the budget. We just had that approved at town meeting. And that was at a $4,503,199 level. That is only a slight increase over the FY '20 budget. So again, very consistent with previous budgets as far as expenditures go. As far as the revenues go, through June 30th, the water division received $4,762,944. And that exceeds the FY '19 revenues of the previous year by approximately 8%. So again, a significant revenue increase. That typically is related to water usage in the drier times, though people will use more water generally. So that's more related to precipitation than it is the economy. But that's what we're seeing. I thought it would be important for the board to get an update on that. I know in the future meetings, you're going to get an update with regards to revenues in the town generally, but this is what the water revenues are looking like currently. As far as water pumped, we're into that heavy usage period currently. And I like to update the board with what that looks like. During the previous three months, which is April, May, and June of this year, the town pumped 455.4 million gallons of water. That's a significant amount. And that's a 17% increase over that same period in 2019. That's also an indicator that the revenues will also track that as well. So I would expect that in the next period, we'll also see significant revenue following that. And again, that's just evidence of our dry period that we're in with regards to water usage. June alone, and so there's important statistic for the board, June alone saw a 35% increase over 2019. So again, a significant amount, given the dry period that we're in. So I think that's all good information for the board to have. And just to keep you, to remind you, 13.2 million gallons is what our pumping, daily pumping capacity is. So we have significant pumping capacity with our 24 wells. And the way DEP has us calculate that is that's with the largest well offline in case there's some issue with regards to production, a pump down, that type of thing. So we do have significant capacity within our system, and it's certainly important to note. The next item, and it's one of the reasons that I've asked Kirsten from Kleinfelder to be with us today, is to talk about water quality. The board had significant questions about that last time. It's the next update item. There's a couple of components. We want to make sure the board is well aware as it relates to water quality. One is that during some recent sampling, we have seen manganese levels elevate slightly in the wells. That's not a surprise, given that many of our neighboring communities already have water treatment facilities for manganese and iron in place and working. Yarmouth does not. We enjoy very good water quality. But we are starting to see that elevation creep up in some of our wells. So it's something we need to be aware of. We can do certain things with regards to usage of those wells, turning them off at certain periods or just not using them, to not introduce that manganese within the system. Lori and Kirsten probably could talk a little bit more about the different things we could do, but it's certainly something that's well worth noting. Again, because many of our neighboring communities have built treatment facilities for that. And those are relatively expensive. In fact, Lori and I just visited the Hyannis system and their facility that's under construction currently. And that is an expensive investment that that community is making. And one of the reasons, in addition to the emerging contaminants, that we're selling water to that system because they have some real needs that hopefully will be eliminated or minimized once that treatment facility is online, they won't need quite as much of the Yarmouth water. But currently, that's one of the reasons we're selling them water and also enjoy some revenues associated with that because of that purchase that's happening with Hyannis. The other component of water quality I wanted to bring to your attention is with regards to well number nine. This has been part of the update previously. It's a well that's been offline for a number of years, so it's not currently in production for us. But we have, and we took it offline because of PCEs previously. Based upon previous testing that Kleinfelder has done and analysis they've done for us, we saw that the levels of PCEs were declining, which is a good thing. And so we took that opportunity to test for PFAS, which is an emerging contaminant that we're all very concerned about. We're seeing it appear in some other neighboring water systems. And so we wanted to see kind of, you know, what at least that well might have for PFAS. And with that said, there was some detection in the monitor wells around that. And I'll turn that over to Kirsten if you want to comment a little bit more about that for well number nine.
Did you have the slides available, or...
They are on the computer. I believe we, I can advance them for you.
Okay, great.
I think if you just hit power.
Yeah. I just prepared a few slides relating to water quality for discussion, you know, to carry on from where we left off, I believe in March, when I last was here with y'all. As Jeff mentioned, manganese, you know, is one issue that we're tracking. That's a naturally occurring mineral. But as he mentioned, you know, there are options for blending, things like that. Nitrate's another thing we've talked about in the past. We have a couple of production wells that have a little bit of elevated nitrogen, but nothing, nitrate, nothing too greatly of concern at this point. So just continued monitoring there. And as Jeff mentioned, taking advantage of the monitoring wells that we installed in the vicinity of well nine to monitor the PCE situation there, we decided to, after discussion with Jeff and the water department, test those for PFAS. So just as a really high-level background on what PFAS is, this is what, you know, is often called an emerging contaminant. It's not one that we know a whole lot about. What it is, is a human-made compound, a class of compounds, very, you know, thousands of actual individual compounds. So it's a class of compounds that have been used extensively in manufacturing. The properties of PFAS are such that it's very valuable in terms of stain resistance, water repellent. So it's used in a lot of, manufacturing of a lot of products. It's also used in firefighting foams. It's an important safety tool for putting out really high-temperature fires like those at, you know, airport facilities where jet fuels involved. The science is still evolving. There's a lot we don't know about PFAS. But, you know, a number of studies have linked PFAS to some health effects. So regulators are really paying close attention to these compounds. In Massachusetts, so the federal government, right now, the health-based guideline for PFAS is 20 nanograms per liter, or parts per trillion. In Massachusetts, the DEP has issued a health advisory much lower than that, of 20 nanograms per liter for the sum of six individual compounds. So whereas the federal guideline is 70 for two compounds, Massachusetts is 20 for six. Massachusetts has also proposed and issued a draft MCL, which is a maximum contaminant level for drinking water. So they expect to promulgate within, sometime in 2020, the 20 nanograms per liter as a limit, an enforceable limit in drinking water. So...
So you're saying that that will be most likely the MCL?
Yes. So far, they have proposed an MCL of 20 for drinking water. DEP is encouraging and actually paying for water systems to test supply wells voluntarily, to kind of see what's, what they have already. to see, kind of see what's, what they have already. So when we, we suggested trying to look at the monitoring wells as a first step, just to see what was going on over there. So that's what we did. We did that in, I think, February? It was late winter. And the results, we put together a memo, which I believe was in your packet. Actually, I think the next slide goes on to talk about that.
Should be after Jeff's presentation.
Yep. Well, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here, but I did want to mention sort of, you know, where might you find PFAS in the environment? Talked about what it's used in manufacturing. This was part of the master plan update that we prepared over the past winter. We sort of looked at the watershed to the wells in Yarmouth and looked at what might be the more likely vulnerable wells based on land uses and potential sources. So you can find PFAS in septic and wastewater in septic. That's a significant source. If that septic is being used as fertilizer, such as on golf courses, that can be, you know, that can leach into groundwater and cause a problem. Landfills are also a known source of PFAS, industrial and commercial, certain types of industry and commerce can contribute to them. Even residential septics have been seen to be a source of PFAS at close to the levels where, that the DEP's proposed MCL is set at. You may have a roadway where there's a vehicle fire and that needs to be, you know, put out firefighting foam, that could be a potential issue. And then fire training, you know, facilities, such as the one in Barnstable, where there's, there is a plume at that facility. So that's sort of the big picture view. Is there a slide about the testing on the wells? So as I referred to, yep, the well nine monitoring network that we decided to look at PFAS. And the good news, one compound was detected of those six that are, that are planned for regulation by the DEP. The highest level that was found was 14. Actually, that's a mistake. I should say, it's, I should say nanograms per liter. I apologize for that. So the 14 being pretty close to the 20 nanograms per liter, or parts per trillion that's being proposed. Nearby possible sources could be septic systems. It's down gradient from White's Path, you know, there may be some, something from past releases there that could contribute. We really don't know. But this kind of gives you just a first snapshot and consistent with other, other communities, other water suppliers that I'm working with, a level in the teens where there is, you know, mostly residential septics nearby is not uncommon to see.
But the slide also indicates that we, the levels appear to be dropping, and quite frankly, in February, we had some fairly significant hits, right?
Of four PCE for the other compound.
No, I'm talking about PFAS.
We've only did one, we did one snapshot of sampling.
Okay. Only one, okay.
Yep.
So I think that's the piece I wanted the board to be aware of. As you can see, the information that we've found, it's below what they're considering the new maximum contaminant level, but it's something to be aware of, something you want to keep an eye on. And this particular well is offline, is also the other piece I want to emphasize as well. So we'll be doing more testing of that, of the water system going forward. That's going to be required by DEP, and we'll keep the board fully informed as to how that testing goes. The next piece of the update is with regards to projects. It's the second page of the memo. The first project to update the board on is the water rate study. We have Ty and Bond doing that study for us. We've been having a lot of discussions with him about that, and now with Lori on board, she's been digging into that with Ty and Bond as well, making sure they have all the information they need to run their model and have that options available to the board. They've promised us that we'll have those water rate options by the end of July. So later this week, I expect to have something I can distribute to the board, so we can have that discussion in a follow-up manner, maybe even before the next quarterly update, just as the board would like, information on how to move the water rates and have that discussion about the different options to cover really all the capital projects that we have that are on the horizon. The second item is with regards to hydrant maintenance. Our target is to maintain, paint 20% of the hydrants each year. We've been able to do that the last couple of years. That means after five years, we'll have gotten to all of the hydrants within the system to make them properly maintained, painted, operated, and all the valving associated with them. In some cases, when the crews get to them, they need to rebuild the hydrants, and that's happening as part of that process. This year, it's worth noting that because of the COVID-19 situation, we were a little late in starting that process. We're still hopeful that we'll be able to keep the seasonal staff on board in order to make the goal that we have this year, but that just means we're going to have to go later in the season because we weren't able to start them as soon because of the COVID concerns. But we'll continue to move on that, and I'll give the board an update of where we stand at the next quarterly update on that progress. Valve exercising and flushing is the other component here. We have a unidirectional flushing model that's in, that's been developed for the town. We also have done low-pressure flushing in all of the critical areas. That was done again this spring. We are also working on a innovative method of what they call ice pegging, or putting ice through certain of the more impacted mains that might need to be cleaned out in more, a more significant way that would target those areas versus a standard flushing. We have a significant number of older water mains within the system, so if we can't completely replace it, we might need to be looking at a more significant flushing or cleaning of those in order to maintain that infrastructure. That's what's currently ongoing. The next item is a project that we're spending a significant amount of time on. In fact, we're getting very close to being able to put this project out to bid, and that's the pump station improvements. And Kirsten, if you want to talk kind of about where we stand with that, I know you have a few slides on that as well.
Yep. Thank you. So as Jeff referred to, the pump station improvements project is a significant undertaking. As you know, you have a lot of infrastructure with 24 wells. That means 24 pumping stations. They range in age from, you know, circa 1930s up to the 80s, but most of them are more in the 50s, the 60s built. Then there's 17 corrosion control facilities. Those were all built in 1993, so they're much newer. Based on a review of the condition and discussions with water operation staff about different safety needs, we identified some priority upgrades for the pump stations and corrosion control facilities. Really, all of them are due for, are overdue for roof replacement. So that is one, you know, universal component of this program. A lot of the older stations need significantly additional upgrades. So nine of them have asbestos sealing tiles that we really want to remove. They also have below-grade vaults that don't have any ventilation or lighting, difficult egress, so that's a safety concern. The roof hatches, which is the penetration through the roof where the pumps are pulled out vertically, those are deteriorated. And then a number of them need some electrical upgrades and some smaller other items. So that's sort of what we're, what we're looking at. We put together a facilities plan to help prioritize, you know, how do we, you know, eat the elephant, so to speak, or take, take little chunks out of this and get it done. So what we looked at was breaking into three phases, roughly around $7 million, it's looking like. Based on the prioritization for those older stations that I mentioned, the ones with asbestos, and then three others that are the oldest, we designed improvements for 12 of those stations. And then when we updated the cost estimate at the 100% design, came in around 3.7 million. It's been a little difficult cost estimating environment with a lot of volatility in bids we're seeing, so hopefully that is a quite conservative number. But after discussion with, you know, Jeff, Lori, and the highest priority and how to make it affordable, we discussed focusing on a modified Phase 1 with eight of the stations for $2.5 million roughly. So that's sort of what we discussed as bidding that project. So the plan currently is to put that part of the project out to bid, so that we can get a bid in hand in time for, you know, town meeting, so you know exactly what the cost will be going into town meeting. Because there will be obviously a differential to make up with the funds that are available versus the cost.
Yeah, so the other thing I wanted to point out with regard to the pump station improvements, the board is aware of that as we head into the fall meeting and the discussions, is there is a capital request for water of $1.3 million to fund the remainder of Phase 1. But based upon some of the current construction estimates, that's going to be a little short. So we're going to need to modify that number. The engineer estimate is approximately a couple hundred thousand above that, so somewhere in the, you know, 1.5, 1.6 million dollar range. And so the idea that we've been talking about internally is do something very similar to what we did with the DPW building, was put that out to bid in advance, so we're not just going in with a 100% estimate and then find out the construction bids are over what we have for available funds. So I'm just looking for the board's input about that process and whether we want to move in that direction. But bringing a hard number to town meeting, it's not going to necessarily be a ballot question or anything, but it would be a positive number for the board to, or for the town meeting to vote, is one way to proceed and make sure that we have sufficient funds to cover this, because currently, the construction market's a little volatile, and there's some uncertainties associated with that. And as I mentioned, last year with the fall town meeting and bringing that bid number to town meeting for the DPW building was well-received with having a hard number to be voted. That's the recommended process here as well. And also to give the board a heads up that that capital number that's been reviewed by Capital Budget Committee is going to need to increase slightly. And that's the two components I wanted the board to be aware of with regard to this update for this component. Any thoughts or comments from the board about that process?
Let me ask you, Jeff, are there going to be a number of items that you're looking from some direction from the board on? Maybe we could talk about them as a group at the end and just get through your presentation. But if this is the only one.
Certainly.
Like I said, it might be best just to go through your presentation. We'll flag some of these, like for, for, for some recommended guidance. This would be one, of course.
This would probably be one of the key components. I'll go through the presentation. They're at the end of the memo with regard to recommendations and moving forward, so I'll cover it then.
So in terms of moving forward, we'll come back. We'll revisit this after your presentation.
Excellent. So that's the pump station improvements and the components I wanted to update the board on. Meter pit safety upgrades is another component. This is going to take us some time to do. This is a piece that we're doing with in-house town water division forces. There's approximately 60 residential water meter pits that need to be installed in order to limit, eliminate confined spaces and make them consistent with new OSHA requirements. And that's being done again in-house, and that's an ongoing project. I'm sure that's going to be in the next couple of updates as well, because it's going to take us a period of time fitting those in. They're, they're previously existing meter pits that have been in the system for quite a while, but we're looking to eliminate those and change those out as time allows. The next component, the next project is a SCADA update, upgrade project, and that has recently been completed for wells number 14, 21, and 22. That's what we're considering our pilot component of that SCADA upgrade, and that's been completed for those wells. And so we're now developing a scope of services and a budget in order to implement that computer management system associated with running those wells at the rest of the pump stations. That's going well. That's just progressing slowly to make sure that we are rolling it out to the whole system once we're confident it works with a few wells. Sandy Pond Tank is another project. That's the next one that's on the list for painting and cleaning. And the, what we're working through now is investigating the interior condition of the tank. This is also one that Kleinfelder is working on for us, and once that's determined, we'll have a full scope of services developed and plans and bid specification developed for painting and cleaning of that tank. So we have been setting aside money on a regular basis in the capital project for this particular project, and indications are now that we should have sufficient funds to, to deal with that project. But if that needs to be adjusted in the future, we can talk about that at the next update. But as it stands now, we're just looking to further scope the interior of the tank. Fence upgrades is another project in a number of our wells, as well as the German Hill tank. There needs to be additional fencing and control of those facilities. That's something that now with Lori on board, she's been able to jump in and start working on this project that's been out there for quite a while. We've had money approved in previous capital articles for that effort. We feel it's sufficient to do what we need to, and now with additional staff on board, we're moving that forward to provide those new fence opportunities. With regards to German Hill, we're looking to do that in conjunction with a Verizon cellular installation that's going on at that site in the relatively near future. I think the board's heard a little bit about that. Some of the residents in that area were concerned about cell phone coverage, particularly Verizon, and that when the Yarmouth Port area, that will, this installation for Verizon will provide much improved coverage in that area that's going on, with somewhat of a separate project being done through a lease with Verizon, but we'll be doing fence upgrades in conjunction with that.
Do you have a rough idea on the lease revenue?
Approximately, all the lease revenues are very similar, and they're all about $30,000 a year. Very, very slightly. We have about nine different leases out there, but that's roughly the dollar value of those leases. Good money for that community. The next project is well redevelopment. It's a very important concept. It's money that we allocate in the capital request every year. So four to five of the wells are redeveloped every year to make sure that the production is, volume is maintained, and that's an important preventive maintenance project that we do. And for every capital ask, this is always a component of it, approximately $150,000, but it's a very worthwhile investment in four or five of our wells, and we rotate those through each year. So after about five or six years, we've redeveloped every well, cleaned every well essentially, and that is a very important program that's continuing. The next one, there's also one that I'd like to have Kirsten comment a little bit more about, and that's the Comocoot Heights Water Service. As the board is aware, we have a agreement with the Barnstable Fire District. They provide water to the Comocoot Heights neighborhood. And because Barnstable Fire District has regularly increased their rates, and our rates haven't changed in 24 years, there is a delta that's developed in those. And so a couple of years ago, I presented to the board, the board endorsed rebating that neighborhood for the difference in those rates. I would suggest that if our rates are adjusted in the future, we might not see quite a difference, but that's the reason, because they are going up 2% to 3% every year, and we've been flat. So that's where that stands. We just got through the most recent round of rebates to that community, and that impact was $11,880. So it's not a huge dollar number each year to make that, in the grand scheme of things, to make that rebate to that community. And that is funded through the water sales agreement we have with Barnstable. So that is ongoing for, it's a three-year agreement, and we feel that based upon the revenue coming in from that, that we can cover, probably safely cover four years of rebates to that community. With that said, we are looking at other options on how we could potentially provide Yarmouth water to that community, and it is separated from our system by a rail line, and so it would be a matter of going underneath that rail line in some strategic locations, and that's where I'll ask Kirsten to comment a little bit more about that. This was a item within our water master plan that Kleinfelder looked at for us and came up with some cost estimates.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, so part of the master plan update, where we looked at the hydraulic model and evaluated, you know, needs areas, any areas with inadequate fire flow, we, we looked at this as well to evaluate, you know, how would a connection work without impacting the existing part of your system and how much it might, might it cost. So the challenge is that you have really two small sections. Sort of the north section, where there's a handful of houses there, north of Long Pond, and on the west side of Long Pond, you can sort of see the town line cutting through really north to south, and then it jogs off to the southwest a little bit. And then another set of houses to the south of Long Pond. So we looked at both of those areas. So we looked at both of those areas in a feasibility and preliminary cost evaluation. If you want to advance the slide, Jeff. So what you're seeing here on the map on the right, in the white lines are our proposed or potential new water mains that would connect to the existing water main. You can see the yellow line and the blue line on Willow Street. That's your existing system. So for the northerly section, you would have to do a crossing of the railroad. Generally what we do is use a directional drill to do a trenchless crossing underneath their railroad. That's what we assumed anyway. It's least disruptive to the rail line. And that northern section, the white lines that you see there, it's about 200 feet under the railroad and then about 2,000 or 2,100 feet of new water main. That would be pickup houses on Congressional Drive, Firestone Drive, and mid pine, part of Mid Pine. To service the residents in the south section, you're again looking at a railroad crossing there, about 550 feet. And then about 3,000 feet of new main for those residents on Sister Circle and Desert Sands Lane. And then in the little table, you can see, you know, the number of residences that would be served by these two separate projects and the estimated cost, a little over $1 million, $1.6 million for the south section. So it's, it could be fairly significant. One other thing we looked at as a possibility would be also extending the water main up along Augusta National Drive. I think there is a few other residents in Yarmouth that would not be served by either the north or the south options that we're showing here. To do the north and the south and then connecting them with Augusta National Drive would be 3.5 million approximately. So that's what we've done so far, just to kind of look at the feasibility and cost of this potential expansion.
Right. So that's what we asked Kleinfelder to do, look at the capital costs associated with making that connection and they've done that. As the board can see, those are some significant dollars associated with the capital. And the delta, as I just shared, was less than $12,000 on a yearly basis.
191 years.
An awful lot of time to pay back that, absolutely. So I would suggest if the board felt that we wanted to continue that rebate, again, the delta might change if we adjust our rates. But if they want, if we wanted to continue that, that might be something to look at absorbing within the operating budget if the Barnstable dollars run out. So those are things we can talk about as we move forward. As I mentioned before, we have sufficient funds to at least one or two more years of the rebates before we need to talk about how do you want to proceed. The next project to update the board on is utility cloud implementation. The water division and IT staff have been working on rolling out phases of utility cloud, which is our asset management work order system. And that's something that's a work in progress. But that is something that we use for cross connections, fire hydrant inspections, and, you know, things of that nature. We would like to expand that to other components such as at the pump stations or other components of the facilities that can be tracked with utility cloud. Right now, the town uses that, the DPW uses that for facilities requests, for catch basin inspections. So it's a full-service work order asset management system and we're just looking to expand that to other components within not only water, but also within public works. It's been working well for us. We just need to take it to the next step as far as, it's a good planning tool. We'll know exactly how much time we've spent in different functions and how much we're investing in our infrastructure, so it's a good planning tool as well. Land acquisition is the next component. What we have recently been looking at is there are 10 individual properties that are listed for sale along Higgins Crowell Road. And working with Karen Green, the Community Development Department, we have gotten a recent appraisal done for those properties. And I know this is an update that I, we will have maybe even as soon as your next meeting with the Community Development involved in that discussion. So we're in the process of working on a memo to update the board on the results of that land appraisal as well as kind of next steps in that process. Most of those properties are within 1,000 feet of the well and our water master plan indicated that when properties come up for sale within 1,000 feet of the well, we should consider whether we want to purchase them or not. So that's the investigation that's going on here. Again, you'll have a memo shortly to the board about where that process stands.
Okay.
The last big project, at least active and ongoing project here to update the board on is Route 6A. I've included that here. I also noticed that on your agenda, it's listed as a subitem. So we do want to spend a little bit of time on this one as well. We had a series, as the board is well aware, we had a series of public meetings about that corridor in conjunction with the water main replacement project that we have anticipated from 6A, for 6A, which is roughly from the Barnstable Town Line to Union Street. We know that's a very old piece of infrastructure, very few shut-off valves and needing to upgrade some hydrants in the area. It's one of the number one projects with regards to water main replacements. It's also a very costly project for us as well. But as part of that project, there are some road maintenance improvements that can be done. And we got a sense from some of that community outreach that was done almost a year ago now, what the community would like to see. There wasn't a consensus on a wide range of improvements with regards to upgrading a lot of components. And Kathy Williams is here today to talk about some of that, if the board would like to further discussion on that Route 6A project. But the current approach is to do those road maintenance improvements as part of the water main project. A lot of those relate to safety improvements. Certainly there was a consensus around improving crosswalks, transitions to the sidewalk, sidewalk improvements that might meet ADA requirements, things of that nature. Much of that water main that needs to be replaced is in that northern half of the roadway, which is also the sidewalk, the sidewalk is as well. So I think we can take that opportunity, once we replace the water main, to put the road back together, consistent with what some of the desires we heard from the community. So that is the project. I don't know if Kathy want to comment anymore or if there are questions about that as we wrap it up. I'm sure Kathy can help answer some of those components. With Lori on board now, she's had a good opportunity to look at the plan and see from my water engineering perspective of what she'd like to see. And it has provided some good comments to VHB about the water main utility component of that. And so the next piece for us is to provide and make sure that VHB is properly reflecting some of the road maintenance components of that before we move that forward. We do plan to go back out to the community with that updated plan to get their input on that as well. With that said, I covered the active projects, but it's worth noting there are several projects that we're wrapping up. One is the water master plan and that is available. If the board would so choose, we can send that out for the public dissemination, public comment. That's, you know, really up to the board. But that has been essentially completed, which is a good document. Will help guide our planning going forward for at least the next five to seven years. Also, the capital investment plan, the five-year plan was updated as part of the FY21 budget submission. So that's a project that we'll look at continually updating each year as we have a new five-year cycle with the budget process. The preventive maintenance program, I talked about that before with regard to the well redevelopment. And in 2019, we redeveloped wells number 15, 19, 22, and 23. So those are just examples of wells that went through that process and have recently been redeveloped. And also the leak detection and documentation, one of the final projects that our general manager had before he moved on and we brought in our water and wastewater superintendent, was to update the policies and procedures documents related to water leak detection program. And that's been completed as well. So there's a number of things that, having Weston Sampson on board to do some of those things on a day-to-day perspective, updating policies and procedures, that was recently completed. With that said, there were a few other things that the board has asked about in the past that I wanted to update you on. One is the progress with regards to customer service improvements. There's been significant employee turnover in the water division administrative staff as well as at the upper levels. And I think it's safe to say that we're in a much better place with regards to customer service than we have been previously. We've got a great team in place. We still do have one administrative vacancy that we'll be looking to fill in the relatively near term. And then once that's at full strength, I feel we'll be in a great position not only to handle some of the water components, but even some of the wastewater components as we integrate that in a Water Resources Enterprise Fund and potentially have those discussions leading into the fall town meeting. Management outsourcing, as I kind of alluded to earlier, the general manager contract with Weston and Sampson expired on April 30th. The incumbent wasn't able to continue anyway. He moved on from Weston and Sampson to some project, I believe with MWRA up in Boston. And, but Steve Cushing did a great job for us in the time that he was with us. And we now have Lori on board, which was a good opportunity to transition. Job description updates was another component that the board has asked about previously. We did in January get the water technician two and technician three job description updated, approved by the personnel board, and they're in place now. We've actually been able to promote one of the individuals from a two to a three with the new license requirements. So that's an exciting component to report because that incentivizes the employees to get the appropriate DEP licenses. And that's a good program and that's one we're looking to continue as we create water tech four and tech five job descriptions so we can have people with the appropriate license levels. We are a D4 distribution grade four system, so it would be good for us to have grade three licensed people, grade two licensed people, as well as grade one licensed people, which we have. And on the treatment side, we are a T1 system, but if we can encourage more people to get a treatment license on staff, that would be great. And so we're looking to do that with the job description updates. With that said, that is generally the updates that I have for you. The recommendations, as we've talked about previously, the pump stations is the big one that I'd like to get some board input on with regards to the approach that we're recommending. There's also recommendation with regards to the Higgins Crowell Road. Probably not too much to talk about that at this time because we're in the process of updating a memo for you, but also want to get some input at the appropriate time about land acquisition at, near that well. So those are the two things I'm looking for feedback from the board on at this point.
Okay. Before we have specific discussions on those items, let me just open it up generally to the board for questions on what's been presented. Clearly, there's been quite a bit of information that we've been given. So let's start broadly and then zero in on the specific follow-up items that we need to get into and give some directions. So I don't know if there's any board member that would like to go first, but Tracy, I'll just open it up to you.
I read your, first of all, thank you for the presentation. It is a lot of information, but it's all, it's all good stuff that needed to be looked at and welcome. I'm sure in this not-so-conventional time, it's been an interesting time to join our town, so we're glad you're here. As you know from this presentation, there's a lot going on and, you know, having the potential merger with the wastewater is going to be a lot for you to do. So that's exciting. Specifically, I have questions basically on all the topics. As far as Weston and Sampson, were we able to achieve everything in terms of deliverables with them that we set out to? I know there were a lot of, a lot of points within the department that they had been tasked with looking at and trying to work towards resolving internally, other than just customer service with the outsourcing and how, I guess just what your view is, and maybe this is a question for you, as if there's something, a different way we're going to be moving forward in terms of the actual operation, day in, day out, of just the water department.
Yeah, I think we got as far as we could with Weston and Sampson. They were an exterior consultant that was available to us on a daily basis. But as far as, you know, their inspections with regard to health and safety and policy updates and bringing some of the different SOPs up to the, you know, 21st century, they provided all those deliverables to us. And so that's exactly what we asked them to do. They run a number of different water systems. They are consultants to a number of different water systems and they did exactly what we were looking for in the 18 or so months that we had them on board. So this was an appropriate time to transition to a water wastewater superintendent that can then take us to the next step with some of those components with regards to the day-to-day operations. There are pieces that you really need to be in a active supervisor role over to infect, to affect some of those changes that need to happen. And that wasn't possible with just a consultant. So we have that in place now.
This, I guess I was surprised about the emails that we received about the Higgins Crowell Road project. I didn't realize there was a potential, at first I really didn't know what was going on, the impotence behind that. Reading them and recognizing how close they are to the wells, I think it's a great opportunity for the town to look at it. I'm glad you're going through that process. But how does the land acquisition for the water department, I'm not sure the last time the water department took land or purchased land, how do, how do you fund that? What is, what's the process?
Well, that's a great question and I think some of that's going to be discussed in the memo that's going to be given to you shortly that Karen Green is working on. This is new territory for us, relatively speaking. I don't think water has taken any, obtained any property in 20-plus years. We have definitely been more focused on operations with regards to the current infrastructure and certainly one of the focuses I'd like to make sure we stay on is with regards to the infrastructure we have. We talked a little bit about the pump station upgrades. We have, you know, significant improvements within what we already have for infrastructure that we need to find a way to fund and get accomplished and take care of to keep our infrastructure maintained properly. And so that's generally been our focus. So it's definitely been something that's new ground, new territory for us. And so engaging with Community Development and Karen Green and the Open Space Committee, I think is going to be an appropriate way for that to move forward. In fact, Karen's already been talking with the Open Space Committee and they are receptive to that.
Okay. And the Open Space can procure something like that and put the, a deed restriction that would be adequate for water use?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's likely to what you're going to see in the memo that's coming to you.
So some of these, that's, I guess that's the thing. Some of these questions that I have are, you know, a lot of, a lot of my questions are related to funding the 6A project, the land acquisition, which might be separate, but a lot of our upgrades, which probably tie into the rate study.
Absolutely.
So I think we're kind of maybe a little bit ahead of the game because, you know, obviously we have work that needs to get done, but the bottom line is how are we going to afford it all? So whether or not it can be packaged and it could be paid for through the rate increase, you know, you talk about Barnstable and their 2% to 3% every year, you know, I keep feeling that that's something we probably should have been doing. I mean, our taxpayers have been getting a great benefit for the water and I think that's a great thing because we've still been able to keep up with what we had. But we've got some big work ahead of us in terms of just the water infrastructure before we get to wastewater and how we can do that without having a tax impact, I think is going to be, it's all going to come together. So I'm really, I have a lot of questions about the funding, but I think the rates probably in your mind are going to offset some of those projects. So as far as what we have now in our stabilization for water, what do we have? You said we passed 1.2 at town meeting, so we need another 1.3. Is that what you're?
We currently have just under $1 million for that first phase of the project. The request we made that would have gone to spring town meeting until capital items were delayed was for the 1.3. So that's not even approved yet. So that needs to...
We need the full 2.3.
2.5 is the current estimate, absolutely.
Okay. And as far as 6A, you know, we were, yeah, I was at one of those meetings and I watched the other ones. So there's a lot of thought that went into that. Tying that into the water main project, just trying to figure out as far as funding goes because obviously we all know that's a state road. So how is the state helping you work through that?
They currently aren't helping us work through that.
Right, exactly. That's always the problem is my point, you know, when we try to work in conjunction with a state road and I've said it, you know, we've done and you've done a great job maintaining our road. our roads, and we've invested in our roads, and all of our roads are in great shape. The worst roads that we have in our town are Route 6A, Route 28, Route 6, all of them not belonging to us.
Correct.
So it kind of ties our hands a little bit. But there's a lot of, there was a lot of, VHB did a lot of renderings that were significant improvements to portions of that. So I'm not sure how that ties into the water project, so.
Well, I think most of the significant renderings, and I'll let Kathy comment, this might be an appropriate time for that.
Well, I'd like to delve into that if everyone doesn't mind. I'd like to just make sure that the things that we need to follow up on, the pump station, the land issue, I would put 6A improvements in the master plan, I'd like to get through those items not related to those, and then we can really focus in on going through each one of those as a board to give you some direction. So just hold off on that for a moment. So Tracy, was there anything else?
Well, I mean, just, I'm glad that we have the monitoring wells. Hopefully, we can increase those. I read in your memo also about the proximity to some of our commercial properties and what your suggestions might be there in terms of a survey. But that's in the aquifer protection district already, right? So they're limited in terms of what they're supposed to have because of this issue. Are there things in zoning that need to be looked at to help? I mean, I know with the aquifer protection, they're only allowed to have a minimal amount of product. So are people not following that? I mean, I guess that's my question. Do we know, we don't know the source. The source could be from a myriad of points, I guess.
Yeah, correct. And we have a snapshot in time and space, essentially. We know which way groundwater's flowing, so, you know, the closest potential source are septic systems. The businesses upgrading on White's Path, you know, there may have been something in the past. We did actually detect some compounds that are not proposed to be regulated. There are some of the newer PFAS compounds that have been developed to replace the older ones, and the newer ones are supposed to be safe. So that was kind of interesting.
Do you believe that these are from, like, medications that are in people's systems type of thing that get into the septic?
As far as septic systems, from what I understand, it's more likely to be things like sunscreens or potentially different foods.
What about fertilizers?
Yep, fertilizers could be a possibility, yeah.
All right. So I guess we really have to keep our eye on that. Hopefully, do you know when you'll be doing more? I know it was a snapshot in time, but is there an interval of which?
Well, we'll need to discuss that with the Water Department leadership. You know, this was sort of a, let's do a one-off here, and then we'll discuss whether we should go back to looking for PCE, or if we should do another round of PFAS with remaining funds, or if we should use the remaining funds in the budget for something else, like planning additional monitoring wells. PFAS testing is pretty expensive. It's like $300 a sample, so it's more expensive than the other testing. So I think we'll get together, talk to Jeff and Lori about next steps on that project.
Yeah, as far as Comacord Heights, I mean, obviously, the return on investment is just not there. I mean, I know we have four years to figure it out, but at some point in time, it would be nice to have a permanent solution to the issue.
We'll put that on future agenda items when Eric is chair.
There was one other thing that we hadn't talked about that came to mind, but I lost it now. That's it for now, I guess.
Thanks, Tracy. Mike?
I'll go in the reverse order of what I had originally intended to do, only because of Tracy's question. This land on Higgins-Croll Road, is that undeveloped land?
It currently has those 10 lots, yes.
Okay, that's, so, that's all the email we've been getting about this subdivision and people saying, you know, acquire it for well protection, but I'm sure the neighbors don't want it developed, I mean, so that they're, and I don't have a problem with that. The 1,000-foot perimeter, so to speak, for well field protection, how is, is that the rule of thumb in the industry, and how is that set?
Well, I probably defer to Kirsten on that. It is somewhat arbitrary. The Zone 1 is the most sensitive area, obviously, that's within 400 feet of the well. But the next kind of tier you'd want to look at, I'll defer to Kirsten on that.
Yeah, I mean, it was really set as just a rule of thumb, just knowing how susceptible your aquifer is in particular and how quickly contaminants can move through it. This type of aquifer, it's something, you know, I generally recommend for this type of aquifer. Again, it's not a hard and fast rule. It's just, you know, if you see something, it's a guideline, really, to say, like, if there is an opportunity, you should consider it.
So is that, that is currently in an aquifer protection district, that property?
Yeah.
And so what are they limited to? One bedroom every 10,000 square feet? Isn't that generally what the restriction is in the aquifer protection districts?
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, so that will affect the value when it gets appraised. Do you recommend that, you know, all things being equal, if the town could figure out a way to do it financially, that they make that acquisition?
I looked at the maps, and, I mean, I do think it's a good opportunity if you're able to fund it. I would point out there is a DEP grant program that will provide up to, I think, $250,000 for this, exactly this purpose. You know, again, that's not, doesn't go as far on Cape Cod as other places, but, you know, that could be helpful.
No, that's only $25,000. That's not going to happen.
You know, there are other wells, Zone Ones, that have some parcels that aren't owned by the town in them, you know, those are also high priority, but, you know, again, there may be an existing residence there or something where it's much more difficult to accomplish an acquisition, so.
I think this is going to be a topic, if you're preparing a memo with a set of recommendations, we're talking about having it possibly available for August 11th, I think. That's something that we're obviously all going to be very, very interested in.
I'm looking forward to that. I think, I wasn't really aware of those parcels until we started getting the emails, and now tonight, it's all kind of fitting together for me.
Yeah. Well, the owner put them on the market, and then the signs started showing up, and that's what prompted the residents to call, wondering what the town could do. And so when I heard from people, I just said, we'll just send a message to Town Hall. We'll have to, you know, look at it. So that's what's been going on.
Okay. So we'll get probably something in August on that, something that's detailed. All right, good. Now, you talked about the hydrogen, the hydrant maintenance, and that was being done mostly by summer help.
Correct.
What about the flushing? We had talked about that before. The town was, I understand significantly behind on the flushing of hydrants. What is in the immediate plan or intermediate plan for, the intermediate term for that?
So what we've been doing the last couple of years is the most critical locations, the ones we know where there is significant buildup within the pipes, where we do have regular complaints, and we do that typically in the spring. There is a significant fluctuation of usage from, between winter and summer usage on Cape Cod, but particularly in Yarmouth. And because of those changes in flows, changes in direction, we do get a lot of stirring up of the pipes, if you will, of what's in the pipes in the springtime particularly. So that's where we get the bulk of our complaints or concerns about. People are also turning on irrigation systems, you know, wells are turning on that maybe hadn't been used quite as often throughout the season. So we've just gone through a period where, you know, the concerns are going to be happening. But with that said, we've been taking a position where we've gone and flushed the most critical locations. The unidirectional flushing, which I mentioned in the update, is something that's a more comprehensive approach, but it's also a very expensive approach. So one of the things we'll be working with Lori on going forward is, do we want to continue to do a more traditional flushing of the system, or do we want to do a more comprehensive unidirectional flushing of the system? And it's probably going to be a little bit of both, but that's something we're working on internally. The unidirectional flushing is probably not something that we need to do every year and completely. One of the things we've been talking about with Kleinfelder, and we've been talking about internally, is maybe we do half of the system. You know, it's pretty extensive in the sense that you've got to operate all the valves and isolate the system and flush all of the sediment or whatever might be in the pipes in one particular direction. It's also pretty disruptive as well, but it's certainly something that's definitely warranted. And if we did half of the system one year, half the system the other year, and then went back to maybe a more traditional flushing for a few years before you cycle back into the unidirectional flushing, you know, we had Kleinfelder look at what the cost of a unidirectional flushing effort might be. And Kirsten, I don't know if you want to comment on that briefly, but it was very expensive, but it's something that...
Yeah, I can't recall the numbers.
We may want to look at budgeting for, but it was in the $300,000 range to do that. And so it's something that we will likely want to tackle, but maybe on a more occasional basis than an every-year situation.
My understanding, and I could be wrong, I know that the fire chief is here, but I understand that can become a safety issue if they're responding to particular fires and they're trying to access the water from these hydrants that have a lot of sediment in them and the water flow isn't what it should be. Do you talk to those, the fire people at all? Do you get any input from them?
Yeah, we've talked with the fire department about where their priorities might be, where they're seeing that more regularly, and we can incorporate that in our critical area flushing. We do want to do that, and we want to expand those areas that really need that. It is worth noting that no matter how robust the flushing program is, and we do need to make some improvements in this area, there's no doubt, but no matter how robust, you're always going to have some amount of uncirculated water within the hydrant, within the hydrant stem, near a hydrant, you know, in the mains near a hydrant, you know, sometimes it's at a den ed road, you know, that type of thing. So there will always be challenges with regards to hydrants and also the velocity that, of water that's needed to fight fires, is much more significant than what's normally going through the pipes for everyday water supply. So that's going to, in its, in the nature of it, stir up elements within the pipes. So that's a component as well. But now, we've reached out to the fire, we'll continue to work with them on where the most critical locations are, so we can make sure we're targeting them as part of our critical area flushing.
You talked about the dry weather that we've all experienced through June and July, and how, has been a greater percentage of water use and so forth. Is there any concern on your part that you, if this weather continues, you might have to go on any kind of a rationing system? Or do we have enough water that we don't have to be concerned with that?
We typically have enough capacity, and that is the number that I've mentioned at the beginning, is like 13.2 million gallons. And typically, we, in our busiest periods, are up around 10 million gallons a day. So we have some capacity there that's not used, so to speak. So for the most part, we're in pretty good shape, but, you know, a prolonged drought, which we're not quite there yet, but if that were to happen, we would need to review the water pumping and our capacity needs. Everything functioning properly, my sense is, we're in pretty good shape. But as soon as you get one or two wells, I mean, DEP, as I mentioned before, does require us to calculate it with the biggest source offline. But what happened, we have 24 wells, what happens if multiple that happen to be offline, and we have a fire, or we have an extended drought period? And we need to continue to monitor that and assess that and bring that forward to you if we felt we needed to implement some kind of water restrictions. We haven't in the past, it's worth noting that Yarmouth hasn't done that. It is something that DEP is encouraging us to look at as part of water conservation and will be a component that will be discussed as part of our water withdrawal permit. That's also something I haven't updated the board on currently because we aren't, haven't had recent discussions with DEP about our water withdrawal permit, but that's going to be happening in the relatively near future, once things change with our water sales to Barnstable. We'll need to revisit that with DEP. And they'll most definitely want to encourage us to do some additional water conservation measures and things of that nature. You know, Kirsten probably could comment on what she's seen in other communities with regards to some of those components, but certainly encouraging water conservation is a big focus for DEP, and that becomes even more important in drier periods.
In terms of that 13.2 million gallon capacity, does that include the water that we're selling to Barnstable, or is that, in other words, is that a net number, or is that a gross number minus what we're selling to Barnstable?
Yeah, that's the total capacity, no matter where it's going, that we're able to pump.
And how long, I heard that they were trying to make plans to get off that arrangement, get away from that dependency on Yarmouth water. What, could you bring us up to date? Is there, is that the case?
Yeah, that's the case. As I mentioned before, Lori and I, just a couple of weeks ago, went and visited Hyannis to see their, how far along their treatment construction is going, and it's pretty far along. They've indicated that by this fall, they expect that if that's fully functional, that they won't need to purchase water from Yarmouth anymore. But it's worth noting that it's likely, and this is something that Dan and I'll have to have at the higher levels with Barnstable, that they may want to continue with an IMA just to have that available to them. But the position that they're taking is that with that facility that they're constructing there, off of Yarmouth Road, fully functional, they won't need our water. And that does change the dynamic of how much we pump and the revenue and all those components. And that is primarily the reason DEP has said, you know, we're fine with holding off on our discussions about water withdrawal permits until Barnstable's needs are satisfied, if you will. So that's going to likely happen very soon, either this fall or early next year.
Okay. In terms, jumping around a little bit here, but in terms of the PFAS, you talked about certain things that cause that to become present in water. Has there been anything locally, any more specific identification as to what those components are and what the source of them are and where the infiltration is occurring?
No, I mean, the short answer is, it's not something we've looked at at this time. I think it would probably be pretty difficult to nail that down to any specific property. I mean, the compounds that you measure also, you know, they break down and they transform, you know, those precursor products that then transform into, you know, daughter products, if you will. So it's pretty complex to try to find out exactly where it's coming from, especially with the potential for, from a variety of places.
Okay.
It's not been part of our scope of what we've focused on.
So that, I mean, that makes any kind of a mitigation effort difficult, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much towns that have the issue are going to treatment, or looking at alternate sources, you know, if you have one source that's got zero and the other one has, you know, 20 or 30, just balancing the sources that you have using the lowest concentration sources.
The Sandy Pond tank, how often are those tanks painted? It seems, and I'm not saying this critically, but it seems like we're always painting one of these water tanks, and they usually go, what, upwards of a million dollars? What's the lifespan of one of these maintenance jobs that you do on a water tank?
That's a good observation. They're very expensive, and certainly in excess of a million dollars is what we're looking at. The program we have is, we have three water tanks in town, and so what we've been typically doing is one every five years. But when I say one every five years, you've got to fund it in one year, you've got to do some design and bidding, and then there's mobilization of a contractor, and then that takes a period of time, and you've got to time it based upon the time of year. So it's a multi-year process to paint a tank, and then you're, as the observation was just made, then you're on to the next one. So every five years is our, been our program, so that in 15 years, you're back to the same tank. So it's almost like a constant process, if you will. In fact, we have explored with Kleinfelder some different opportunities to more regularly invest in tank maintenance, and, you know, some of those programs are things that we haven't thought are the best direction to go. we haven't thought are the best direction to go for our system at this time, but there are different opportunities out there. It is a constant investment, whether you do that on a year-by-year basis, or you do a more significant rehab every year, every five years, I should say. That's typically what we've done, is every five years.
The Comquid folks that get their water from Barnstable and they're credited through Yarmouth billing, I believe, and that's tied into the water supply in Barnstable, isn't it, that, that they buy from, from us?
Right, so they get a bill from Barnstable and they pay that. They're a customer of Barnstable, that's Barnstable's water, they maintain the, the water lines, they provide the water, they treat the water, they, they do all the maintenance. So it's, they're part of that system. They don't receive water from Yarmouth. That rail line really does make a hard separation between the water supplies, if you will. And so the way it, it works is they're a customer of Barnstable Fire District. If there's any notices that they need to put in their billing, they can, because they, they pay those bills. And once a year, we get the readings from Barnstable Fire District, and we administratively calculate the difference between what they would have paid if they were a Yarmouth customer and what they currently pay as a Barnstable customer. So it's a pretty significant effort and time that takes. As, as you heard in the presentation, it's not a large number of properties or residents, but it does take a pretty significant amount of time for us to go through that effort, get the information, make the calculations, submit them on a vendor warrant, that they're actually kind of getting paid from the town of Yarmouth, if you will, for that, that rebate check, and then going through the all administrative process. We worked that out with, with Ed and the finance team a couple of years ago. It was difficult working through it the first time because we had never done anything like that, and it is a different process. We now have the process down, so we're able to, to make that happen a little quicker and that we have a process, but it still is a significant time to figure out the rebate and make that happen.
Is Barnstable paying for that delta through the rate that Yarmouth charges Barnstable? Or not? Or, or is that reimbursement solely on Yarmouth?
No, the Barnstable IMA has a yearly fee associated with it just to have the agreement. And it was, the first year was something like $15,000, and the second year was $18,000. And I believe that third year of that IMA is $20,000. So they make that payment to us, no matter whether they take a drop of Yarmouth water or not. That has the potential to continue. We need to have those discussions with Barnstable about what a future IMA might look like. But then in addition to that, there is a charge for, per gallon, for every gallon that we send it their way.
There's not a capital charge on them, too?
And that's a capital charge on that. That, that charge that they pay in, in Barnstable is more than any rate payer in Yarmouth pays. It's the rate, Yarmouth rate payers pay plus a capital charge.
And they're not the fire, they're not the fire district. So the fire district feeds water to the Comquid Heights. This is the town of Barnstable that we have the IMA with.
Right. It's really three parties, it's, it's complicated.
Yeah, it's very complicated.
Those aren't really good conversations to have with Barnstable, just, you know, going forward.
Okay, that's my initial questions.
Good, thanks, Mike. First of all, I want to associate myself with, with the comments made by both Mike and Tracy. They've made some very, very good points. I'd, and following up on Tracy's concern about contamination, we can establish-
Yeah, I gotta check into that, if it's being heard out on the broadcast. Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to figure out what's not. But I, I very much, I'm in sync with the comments that they have made. It may be helpful to have as a, you know, I like this list of projects current. I would probably add to it groundwater contamination in the zone or near, you know, adjacent to or related to well number nine.
Okay.
And I think we just need to, we want to stay on it. I think she's made some very, very good points that if we can, I mean, we're seeing hits of contaminants, and it begs the question, what do we do? Hopefully, the numbers will go down, and hopefully, we can bring that well back on, but we're still sort of in limbo in all of this. And I think, Tracy, I think it's a priority in that the board should be regularly updated in terms of the sampling, what your recommendations are and so forth. So I would add that to your research projects. I also agree with Mike's comments about the hydrant maintenance and flushing. I just have this nightmare scenario where I, we have a pumper out there handling a fire in, in a section of town where the system hasn't been well maintained, and now we have sediment and contamination coming into a pumper, and Dan's giving us a notice that, hey, by the way, we're going to have to get the fire truck. The other one was destroyed by all this sediment and material in one of our fire trucks. So this is, this is, this has got to be, continue to be a very, very high priority for us. So I just want to sort of make it very, very clear that I, I very much am in sync with them in terms of the priorities and the concerns that they have. Now, moving forward, I think on the items that we need to give you direction on, I think the item with respect to land, that's an item for maybe our next meeting. And then you'll be ready to brief us and provide some of the recommendations and observations of others, town departments, maybe the open space committee, but at least give us some initial recommendation, recommendations in terms of what you're thinking there. So, so I, I think that's pretty well set. I do think it's helpful to talk about the pump station. Let's just sort of put that front and center right now. You're looking for some direction to put that out to bid, to tee that up, to move that along, so when we come to town meeting, you know, you're ready to present some final recommendations and costs so that we can act on it, correct?
That's the recommendation, yes.
I'm just gonna just stop right here and ask if any board members feel strongly about giving them the green light to move forward or the red light. I'll start with Mike, and then I'll come over to Tracy.
Well, I think it's important. I think it's something we have to go forward with.
Tracy?
Yeah, I, I guess, are we, do we have the documents and the engineering already that we're at a point we can afford, that, that groundwork has been done, that we know we can go to town meeting with, with a request?
Yeah, Kirsten probably could comment more, but we're at the 100% design stage on that project.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it's not, it's not preliminary engineering.
Okay.
The estimates that we have received are on the 100% design.
Okay. Yeah, all we really need to do is, if the decision is to, we've designed the improvements for 12 stations, because that was the original scope. If we want to reduce it to the eight stations, the top priority stations are the 2.5, we would just need to edit the design documents to pull out those other four stations from everything, put a bid, bids in hand.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
Critical to that whole decision-making process would be the date set for town meetings, such that the documents can be put out to bid, the period in which the estimates come in, and then they, they are awarded to the point where they'll hold the price for a period of time that we want town meeting to fall within that timeframe, so.
Good to know. So Tracy, is your, what's your recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's, I think we have to move forward with planning. Of course, I think the funding is huge, and so I'd be more interested in what the plan on how you're paying for it is. So you're saying we don't need to go to a ballot, so it would just be town meeting approval, so internally somehow we'd be able to fund it. I, I get a little bit, I mean, so we spent the money to engineer and design 12 stations, we're going to do a piece of it. So when we go back to do that again, that's going to be an additional cost, because it's no longer going to be valid information, most likely. You know, if, if it's years in between, we go to that phase, the numbers and, I mean, obviously, the design will probably stay the same, but the projections are going to go up. So I'd be more interested in what the long-range plan is. I mean, are we piecemealing this? How many years is it going to be before we need to go back?
Well, those are all great questions, and that does tie into the water rate study. So right now, we currently have just over $3 million in retained earnings in water. And so we can pay for that with cash with the approach that we've talked about tonight, which is a more streamlined Phase 1. We certainly can't pay for the full 7.4 million to do the whole thing. So it is a different approach to projects as well. Over the last 20-plus years, everything has been paid for in cash, you know, in, you know, with retained earnings. And then we'd only do as much as we could within what we have available funding. And we do have available funding for the restructured Phase 1 that was presented tonight. That's, is available in retained earnings. But at some point, we don't have enough in retained earnings to do projects. And so we need to talk, when we talk about the water rate study in more depth in a future meeting, about borrowing and borrowing for projects, and if that's what we want to do and how that impacts the rates. If the planned policy decision from the board and water commissioners is to continue to pay for everything with cash, which is a way to go, your rates would have to adjust accordingly to cover that. Or you could spread it out more by borrowing for a project and just making longer terms to pay that back.
And we don't have any borrowing debt.
No debt in water at all, and that's not common. Most water systems do have some amount of debt to pay for projects. So that all goes again to that water rate study and how we want to move forward with projects.
So I guess I'm concerned with, you know, obviously, the economy and what happened with our capital budget and what the potential for the future could be. I'd also be interested in, you know, perhaps borrowing from ourselves and what, what those, I know we have some money set aside. I don't know if those have all been earmarked for other capital projects. I know we've talked about it a lot for, for other things, but I, I guess in the, in the scheme of things, would it be smart to borrow from ourselves to accomplish that? I don't, I don't know. Just, I, I feel like, I feel like I can't really make, without having the water rate study and figuring out how we're going to pay for it, I'm not really sure. And, and if that can be done in a couple of weeks, I'm, do we need this decision or direction now?
Well, the thing is, is that we're looking at a three-phase project.
Right.
And so we can certainly greenlight it. They may very well be getting bids for a couple of phases, so you can look at what, what your options are. You don't necessarily, you can put a larger project out to bid and then make, either create deducts or add-ons conceivably, right?
Right, well, we could put the larger Phase 1 out to bid, but the current estimate, I'm not comfortable we could pay for that with retained earnings. It, that pretty much maxes us out. I forget what the numbers were exactly, but it was in the, you know, higher range, was it, you know, three or so million dollars? There is a purpose for retained earnings beyond just paying for capital projects. And, you know, this is more of a financial question than, than it is public works, but, you know, that is the water's stabilization fund, if you will. So let's say something happens significantly, you need to dip into that, you, you want to have a certain amount of retained earnings to operate your business, if you will. And some policies in different towns have said, well, three months is an appropriate retained earnings. Some have said six, want to take a very conservative approach. And so we don't want to wipe that out. So we've always looked at what we have available for projects. And my concern with the more significant Phase 1 project, it really ticked off a lot of the really critical components. It really took care of asbestos that we want to deal with and the confined space issues. It's, it's really a great project, but it would really tap us out in what we have available in retained earnings to a level that maybe we don't have or want to have at that low level. We want to retain some of the money.
I'm going to follow up on Tracy's point. What, what can you do given the funds available? Can you at least move on that?
I feel comfortable with the rehabbed Phase 1 that we have, that estimated 2.5 as being sufficient, and still have sufficient retained earnings to move forward.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might? One of the things, if it's not too late, Jeff, I know it's kind of late in that master study, rate study, but one of the concepts in how you would do this is you get a borrowing authorization from town meeting, and you calculate how many years you want to generate the fee structure to pay for whatever your improvements are on a schedule. So I'll just make up the number, but say you wanted to make $3 million worth of improvements and pay for it over the course of a five-year borrowing note, you would just factor that into what the rate structure needed to be to balance that. So you're not necessarily tapping into your, your stabilization, your retained earning funds, or you could use a mixture of the retained earnings with borrowing. So I mean, there's a lot of different options. So what I'd ask, I know Ty and Bond does a lot of work with a lot of communities as it relates, and based on the magnitude of our projects that are in front of us and the duration in which they're intended to last, it would be helpful if at this late hour, they could add some examples on the projects that we know that are coming down the pipe pretty quick, their recommendations on how they see other communities, what the finance vehicles are. Borrowing right now is very favorable. It's a favorable environment. And certainly, the idea that if you borrow and have a schedule to your borrowing over the course of many years, as projects get paid for, and it opens up capacity in your budget, you can roll new projects into that and you get to the same phrase. I mean, paying by cash is, is fabulous, but the problem is when you have significant needs in front of you, you can't generate enough cash to, to do what you want to do. So if, if it could be asked of Ty and Bond to give us some models that they would recommend on these very first few projects, that'd be pretty helpful, financial model.
Absolutely. This is a perfect time to have this discussion, because we can give them that feedback that can be reflected in the draft options.
Yeah.
So what you're hearing is, is that the board's interested in giving you very positive direction to proceed. We just are very nervous about how to pay for it. I think that's the concern.
Well, we had this, this was an issue with Gulf. I mean, we, we went forward thinking that the money was, was there, we did a $2 million project, then, you know, then we didn't have the funds to do it. So you don't want to bite up more than can chew. But I guess I, in my mind, when you talk about like the Route 68 project, which I know is a different conversation, but, but that's infrastructure that needs to be funded as well. So are we depleting all of our money on, on this project? How are we going to fund that project? I just, I, I guess I feel like it's-
What you're saying is a very good point.
Well, I, I mean-
And that is, is that we have multiple projects, multiple priorities within water, and do you want to spend a huge chunk of available dough just on one big project, not knowing how you're going to take care of some of the other urgent ones? I mean, the fact of the matter is, the system has not been, you know, sustained and maintained as it should. I'm not criticizing anybody, it's just the reality of it. You've come, I'm glad you're still here. You've come here for, with a system that needs an enormous amount of work. You know, some people might have said, well, maybe on second thought, maybe it's time to go someplace else, but there's a huge workload here. There's an enormous amount of money that needs to be invested.
That's what I like about Dan's point. Dan's point is, if you had a, if you had a sum of money, you have a five-year plan to get all of it done. Whatever that debt is, is what you, I mean, it's great that we pay by cash and we don't have debt, but perhaps we need to look at a bigger-
We have more projects and more money needed than we have cash available.
Exactly. And then so, so we're looking at one little piece, we're going to deplete all of our funding.
Right.
And then what happens to any other project that comes forward?
Well, that's, that's where I'm getting to, is that I think what we need to be able to do is to look at all, sort of literally lay out a water investment plan that looks at all the capital and figures out the timeframe for all of these projects.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more question?
Let me just, let me just finish this point. What we need to do is look at the timeframes for all of the projects. Some are urgent, some are less than urgent, and so look at them in totality and then figure out, funding-wise, if we as a board agree that we're going to do hydrant maintenance, we're going to elevate that or the storage tank, we need to look at all of these and figure out where they fit in the overall water system improvement plan. And then the rate study has to match with that so that we can make the, we can explain to the taxpayers in Yarmouth, these are the capital upgrades that are needed, this is the timeframe that we need to make them, and this is how, in the long run, we expect to pay, and how the rates will correlate with the overall cost of delivering water and keeping the system maintained. I think that's the kind of big picture we need to develop and lay out for people. So I don't necessarily think it's going back to the drawing board completely, but it's really weaving all the pieces together so that when there is a town meeting discussion, they'll say, okay, we need 7.2 million, you're asking us for three or two, what's, what about the rest of it? I don't think we want to be in a position, given all the work that's going on right now and going on now, to be giving the voters piecemeal information. Let's sort of lay out the package. These are the investments that we think are critical, this is the overall number that is going to need, and then figure out with the rate study, which may be the end, how we're going to pay for those, and then come to some consensus as a board on making those investments. Maybe it's a larger ask at town meeting, provided we have come up with and we have a plan in terms of how to finance that. As Tracy said in the very beginning, our rates are low. Now, now we know why a lot of work has been done, because we haven't set aside the money to pay for this that needs to be done. So it's time to sort of tie them all together. So I recognize, Dan?
To what degree are any of this work, would it be SRF eligible for principal forgiveness or, you know, deferred loan payments, you know, very low interest on these water projects?
Kirsten, do you have information on that?
They would be. I'd have to look into that, but I don't-
I have to look into that, but I don't, I don't think that the criteria of this project is...
What about like the water main upgrade on Route 6?
Water main is a possibility. We'll look into that. I don't think that some of the other pump station upgrades, but the water main for sure is a possibility.
But I'd ask Ty and Bond to see if they can render an opinion on the things that they know are generally getting reimbursed or SRF eligible.
The Ty and Bond, and we can ask that, but the Ty and Bond effort, they have our full five-year capital plan. They have all these projects that they're going to put in the options for the rates. So all of that will be discussed as part of that. You know, whether they can anticipate some of those projects being lesser cost than what's been estimated by Kleinfeld. There is, you know, maybe a little dangerous. So I think we want to take a very conservative approach.
Just if it's eligible, if it would be like, like, I know it changes from year to year, but it's worth investigating as to going into this event now.
We'll ask a question. In the grand scheme of things, it's like 6% or something, it's not...
I guess if I could, my one concern about a decision on the pump station project is that, you know, it takes a couple of months to go through bidding. This particular project has a lot of filed sub bids. You want to give the bidders enough time so you get a competitive bidding.
Let me interrupt you for a second.
Yeah.
When you say this particular project, which one are we talking about?
Pump station improvements.
Which one, which phase?
Phase one.
The what?
Phase one.
Phase one.
Okay. So you're looking for at least encouragement to look forward to phase one?
Yes, I guess I would hope to leave with an understanding if we're going to, if we're going to proceed bidding the reduced phase one with the eight stations, if we're going to bid the 12, if we're going to bid eight with the additional four as alternates. We need to know that.
Firstly, I think the reduced eight that we can afford and we know we can pay for is a no-brainer. We, I mean, I think...
I think, I think you're getting that, you're getting that guidance from the board. We're comfortable with doing that.
Thank you.
I think where the yellow lights start flashing is when we start looking at making commitments beyond that. I think what we need to do is work on tying together the capital plan with the financing plan in being able to at least have a big picture in terms of how all of these things are going to be done. Having that done soon.
I'm just concerned, I guess Jeff probably knows the market and what the other towns are doing in terms of bidding and things like that. And I think that we should look at it, as Dan talked about, the interest rates right now. And sometimes you get more money if you go for bigger projects, so.
What you're saying is there may be a more attractive way to finance this.
And not only that, you may get more for your money getting, having a bigger project, is what I meant.
I think you could do, we could bid the eight and the four as alternates to the project. And then as, if we calibrate it like, much like we did with the building, that, that the numbers come in to give us enough time to decide if we have cash available and retained earnings or if we need a borrowing authorization for a warrant article. Because being a special town meeting, we have a little bit more flexibility. That would be able to make you, you could have a game time decision on how you want to go forward.
I'd suggest that just moving forward with the recommended action of bidding before town meeting, having a hard number to town meeting, doesn't necessarily mean that we couldn't change the article wording, because we haven't even got to that point in the program yet, where it isn't a borrowing authorization at town meeting. So at this point, it's just a matter of process. And do we move forward and bid it in advance or wait till after town meeting?
You're getting the green light.
Excellent.
All right, so take it.
With the alternates.
I think what we did...
The alternates, yes.
I think what we did with the DPW worked out perfectly, knowing and not having to go back for more, like many towns have to if they get the bid after the fact. I think that that worked out well, as long as we can time it where it can be held.
Yeah, the other, so we, so we're done with the pump stations, right? We good?
I think we have direction, yes, yes.
Good. The next item that I see is a low-hanging fruit item, but something that needs to be discussed is you, the water master plan. You're looking for, you're done with it, it's in draft form, it's ready for public release.
Yes.
I think, I'd like to discuss this with the board and suggest that maybe we consider putting that out for, for public review.
Oh, is that how it usually goes, the draft? Who reviews the draft first before it gets reviewed?
Internal staff and go, we go through it and then we post it.
Hasn't happened yet?
We're comfortable with the water study, yes.
I think we need to begin the conversation in the community about the extent to which we need to invest in our water system. And quite frankly, the sooner we begin that conversation, the better. With all the other things going on that we need to invest in. I know for some people, they might get sticker shock from it, but I do think it's important to get that out there, to at least make people aware of the kind of investments that will need to be made over time. So let's, I think, unless there's an objection, I think it's important to get that out. The other items, okay, we talked about the pump station project. We've talked about well number nine. We've talked about the land acquisition coming up in the future. Let's for the moment just think on the, on the come-ah-quit work that's been done. I know Eric has been very concerned about it. I think at some point, we may just want to revisit that as a sole item and at least bless the idea of a... You know, now that we know that we have some time, I just think it might be helpful to bring this back up just so that, you know, we know timeframe-wise, as Tracy said, we may have, what, a few years?
Well, we have at least one more rebate option and potentially two. So it could be as much as two years timeframe before we have to do something. But my suggestion, if the board feels like we want that to continue, we might want to put it as a line item in the operating budget. And because our operating budgets, we have a pretty long lead time. We may want to have that discussion in advance so we can reserve something there.
Then I think I would recommend that unless board members feel differently, does that sound good?
That's a good plan.
Yeah, so let's do that. I want to keep that front and center, I don't want to lose track of it. And that's probably, as you recommended, the best way to do that. So let's, let's do that. Okay, we're moving along here. The last item is the Route 6A waterworks slash traffic improvements. It's almost like, we may need, I mean, I'm, you know, the hour is getting late, we need to do other stuff. I think that almost requires, and I'll put this up for board discussion, don't you, do you think that requires just a separate meeting sometime soon? Not a meeting, but an agenda item in August so we can sort of get our arms around that.
Well, I mean, do we even, at this point, you said you're going to go back with the most updated recommendations to the public.
So plans reflect the road maintenance.
What is it that you're looking for us to do tonight? I mean, is this an appropriate time for us to make comment or should we wait until that process has happened? And then staff has a recommendation?
Tonight, I just wanted to update the board on kind of the status.
So you don't need anything from us?
I don't think I need much direction unless you wanted to provide that, but I think we have a good path forward. We just need to execute.
So you don't need any direction from us?
Okay.
Very good. Before we leave water, is there anything that we might have missed, Dan?
I wish, I have one more question that I remembered what I was going to ask about the airport, the airport. Was there any look at, request from the airport? As I said before, when you were here years ago, they were monitoring the perimeters on the Yarmouth side. Is that still occurring?
Well, I know there's a whole, you know, investigation underway there, remedial actions.
It's not, the most current scenario isn't really about the Yarmouth side as it was before years, years back. Years back, there was some concern. So they had started, I'm just wondering if they're still doing it because now it's more on the, what's impacted the Barnstable water.
Right.
You know, and the Barnstable fire training and now they're talking about the airport.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that we're, we're watching that, that we're protected, that any of that potential contaminants aren't going to find its way into our water.
Wasn't there a concern about some down gradient wells from that contamination that were located in Yarmouth that were being watched?
Yeah, but those wells are the Hyannis, the Hyannis wells.
The Hyannis wells.
Right, and they're going to...
The pumping of the Hyannis wells that are near the airport in Mary Dunham, there's several wells in there. They are pulling water from the general vicinity of the airport fire training area. So they are treating, I mean, they are building treatment right now to remove PFAS.
My concern goes back about 20 years. It's before the most recent issue with, with the fire training. It was before any of that was even news. There was a mandate and I'll have to ask Suzanne, because I know Suzanne was on the board at the time, and there was mandated because of issues that arose and I, and I wish I could remember, but I was hoping that you had done some investigation on that.
No, I mean, I'm familiar with the Hyannis system, actually work with them. And, but as far as specific information on monitoring wells in Yarmouth that belong to Hyannis, I can find out, but I don't know right now.
We were planning on having the airport manager come in front of you in September anyways, and I could give her, if you could give me a little...
Can we touch base with Suzanne?
Sure.
Or actually, maybe even Dan Horgan was...
Yeah, he was on the board at the same time she was.
At the time where there was an issue. And I, and I can't remember, I just don't want to lose sight of whatever that was. And if they are required to do that testing and monitoring, I want to make sure that they're doing it.
Send me an email to give me a little bit of detail on it and I'll get ahold of both of them.
It's a little fuzzy, but...
Whatever you got.
I just have one thing, I don't know if it's the same thing as what you're talking about, but I did just get in the mail a notice from the airport that some contamination that had been an issue is now considered closed.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if that's the same thing.
It could be, and that would be a great, that'd be great if that's the same case. Like I said, this goes back long before the Fire Academy issue and I'll find out some more. Okay, good.
I think there's a general concern about, we know pollution, the groundwater flow is from west to east. And so sometimes when there are contamination issues in Barnstable, we know that that potentially can find its way into Yarmouth. Those Hyannis wells that are being treated, I mean, they're right, I'm not even sure if they're in Hyannis. I mean, I think they're on property that's right on the border.
They're very close, yes.
All right, so it's like right there. So if those wells are contaminated, it's legitimate to think that maybe there's other stuff that may be migrating into Yarmouth as well. So I just echo the concern about being vigilant and pollutants and those things that may be migrating into Yarmouth proper. I do think it might be helpful on your project list to add the IMA as an item to periodically update. And I'm not necessarily convinced that we need to get, you know, these detailed, I mean, if we can get periodic updates even like this, I think those would be helpful, you know, so that we don't, it makes it easier so that when we do get together, whether it's every quarter or at the latest six months, we at least are regularly briefed in terms of some of the things that are going on. So I think that, yeah. And the final thing that I'm concerned about is Barnstable is doing long-range water supply studies and looking at potentially developing sites that impact the Yarmouth aquifer district. And so I think what we need to be able to do is somehow be involved in monitoring and following that. To what degree does withdrawal in that part of the lens, so to speak, or the aquifer, have potentially an impact on Yarmouth? You know, oftentimes, you know, we, I don't want to be weighing in at the last minute when, you know, DEP or somebody issues a permit and says, or a water management certificate or something that basically says that they're close to making a decision. I think we need to pay very close attention to their studies, particularly if they're on that part of the town. Because the amount of water that they need in the town is significant. You know, this is, this, Cape's getting smaller. You know, more wellfields are being impacted. Towns are finding ways to have to work with one another to share water. It's just, you know, when you look at this in snapshots over time, the problem's not getting, I mean, it's, it's getting worse. So I think for Yarmouth, what we need to do is to keep that big picture in mind so that as neighboring towns start developing water supply sites, that we make sure that the water that we've always envisioned being there in the Yarmouth aquifer protection district, you know, is water that's still there and hasn't been impacted by, you know, well withdrawals literally on the other side of the town boundary. So I'd like to, I'd like to recommend at the appropriate time, you know, is at least some update on terms of what they're doing with their water supply studies. What other sites are they investigating? Are they investigating any? You know, that's a legitimate question. Are they investigating water supply sites that are, may potentially impact our water resources that are near the, our well sites? Because I think it relates to the whole question of land acquisition even, you know? I mean, from my just vantage point, the wells in West Yarmouth, as we have impacts with other wells in much more densely populated areas, I'm very, very concerned about the future of those wells in areas that aren't as densely populated. Because the areas where we have nitrates, the areas where we have other contaminants, even though they may be low levels, those are fairly densely populated areas. And at some point, I mean, I think there's a preference for non-treated water or at least limited treatment. But we may find ourselves in a situation where we have, you know, we, there's certain wells we just can't take offline. So, you know, and I know nine isn't the only one that's been offline. We've had other wells that have taken offline, particularly because of the nitrates problem. So I think, I think looking forward, we need to be cognizant of what our neighbors are doing, particularly in Barnstable. And so maybe that's part of the IMA discussion with the town. So those are my, my final comments. Once again, welcome. Thank you for being here. We've all done our Google searches on you and we all, we've all heard, we've all heard great things about you. So the expectations are high and water's a priority here. So your concerns, your work won't be ignored, it'll be followed closely. So welcome once again. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dan, the next item, we're a half an hour behind schedule.
Yeah.
We're at COVID-19 updates.
Yeah, I just wanted to catch up. We had a limited town hall opening this week, started, I believe it was on Tuesday. And we've seen a steady traffic from the hours of 10 to 2. We have a staff member that was priorly furloughed from the library staff. He's available now to us four hours every day. And, and we check people in, we allow four people in the building at the time. And I've been, I think our numbers are somewhere between maybe 30 and almost 60, I think, yesterday, folks coming in. And the majority of the traffic is related to beach stickers, landfill stickers. There's some tax payments and, but it is worthwhile to note that what we're seeing generally is activities that could have been transacted either through the mail or electronically, but for whatever different reason, people wanted to come into town hall. So I think it is fulfilling a need for some folks in town. And I know I got to give a big thank you to Ed Santao. He took the lead on this and he's been manning the counter for those periods of time. The public has been generally pretty respectful on everything and, and, you know, we're pleased to do that. It's just, right now, it's a limited scale and scope. And I think with upticks in certain reporting in the press of the COVID-19, different spots that are becoming hotspots and whatnot. And then recently today, we found out about, at the Holyoke Soldiers Home, a resident who formerly recovered has now tested positive again. And it's not been widely circulated, but I think many people felt that if you got this virus, you wouldn't necessarily get it again, you'd have some kind of immunity. And that's not quite apparently what's happening. So I think the staff has a lot of unknowns and, you know, the governor issued new orders for us. We're drafting a new SOP for employees starting August 1st. And interestingly enough, the way the order reads, it triggers if, if an employee goes into one of these states that have been identified as a high-risk environment and they've got to do a quarantine, that the family's first coronavirus act would be invoked. So if somebody comes back and they have to quarantine because they've been in, like, say, North Carolina, they have to quarantine for 14 days, we're going to try to find work-at-home solutions and other things that allow them to go to work. But in the end, if we don't have that, they would be eligible for that Corona family-first leave, which allows them to get paid. Although we did exempt a fair sum of employees, as you remember, from that. But in general, it's, it adds a certain level of complexity to everything that we do and what we want to do with staff going forward. The library, we're working on a plan for that, I'm hoping, you know, in the next...
Much sense, though.
What's that?
I mean, so the point of the order is to prevent people from going to these hotspots.
Right.
So what, if someone's going to go, now granted, the family first, this town probably gets reimbursed for, right? Is that something that's reimbursed?
I think potentially there's some coronavirus funds.
So what's the negative to the employee to do it?
Oh, I don't think there is a downside. No, I don't disagree.
I don't think that that's the intent of what the law is. That's the first I've heard that.
A legal opinion came out to, from a labor lawyer to all the cities and towns. A, a, a legal opinion came out to, from a labor lawyer to all the cities and towns, came out yesterday on that. So we're kind of digesting that now and that's their viewpoint on that. But, you know, what we've been trying to avoid.
Send that around, Dan.
Yeah. What we've been trying to avoid all along is invocement of the provision anyways for people that have issues at home and whatnot. We've been really successful on that. Of course, the thing that we're grappling with now, there was a release by the Secretary of Education about what school looks like and that's going to be a further challenge and how we're going to deal with employees that have school-aged children. So um so we're focusing on that. Like I said, the library is the next area of focus, how we can open that up safely. We're still working to get our transparency shields in order there and work hopefully with Jane Kane over the next couple of weeks to come up with a plan there. We believe that there's a population that wants to interact within the library itself. And then um I think, as you know, because you've seen the emails, we get a constant deluge of information and public commentary about what's going on at the beach scenarios and those are tough environments. There's no question about it and it's not, we're not alone on it. It's, our staff, I think, is doing a really good job. Uh there's been some commentary that the public has been at times a little bit problematic, some elements of the public, but, you know, that's to be expected. They, there's a crush of people and we're in this very hot stretch right now, but we're managing it. And uh and I think one of the more notable situations that we've got going on is Adam Epstein will be in front of you next meeting for um a hearing on expansion of his entertainment activity, but we recently, Bruce Murphy, worked with Adam to allow people to exit their vehicles in these pods, if you will, these ten by twelve areas that are properly separated so that they can enjoy the the wonderful view of the theater screens that he's put up in the entertainment and not have to be trapped inside the cars. So um Bruce went out on a couple of occasions yesterday to sign off on that. So we're excited about that. I know Adam's got some significant concerns and he'll bring those to your attention next, next meeting. But um but we're trying to do what we can to accommodate all the businesses on that front. Uh we've had some, you know, good feedback from the restaurants on this topic. They've seemed to settle into a pretty good groove and the water park is going pretty well. They've uh um had really good attendance and they've been managing their situation. So it's a, it's a challenge for everybody, but uh but things are progressing and I think if you look around the different hotels and hotels and venues, you see them brimming with people and, you know, and from what I see with testing data so far, we've been pretty good. I sent you out an update today. We had one test positive, but we've been in a really good groove on, on testing right now. So um I, I feel like, you know, till at least Labor Day, we're in a pretty good spot.
Do you have a question?
I just wanted to say that um I had last Saturday, I went to a, a virtual concert at Marshville Drive-In and everybody was outside of their car. And but they were, we were clustered together in, basically in front of our vehicle with the people that we were with and if you left that area, you had your masks and I thought it was very well done.
How did you listen to this sound?
Um, uh through the radio.
Through the radio, did it come, do you have like, like earbuds or something or no?
Just through the radio and the vehicles, yeah. And it wasn't, it was funny because when you're near the car, you can hear it, but purposely I walked away and you really could not hear very much.
Interesting.
So but, but there was no, there was nobody walking basically around this unless they're walking and they had their mask on. There was plenty of space and I thought it was very well done. So I'm, I'm happy that we're moving to that step here. Is there about the five, so we have five positive now according to your email today?
Yeah, I think we're like active right now.
Five active. Is there, is there a combination of households in that at all or?
Uh I, I just, so I just get, I, from, at this level that I get information on, I just know the, I don't even know the names. I just know that we have a case positive. I can typically ask if it's male or female. And then there's the, all this, the VNA is doing all this contact tracing. You can see if you're, I read you, I sent you that information from Chatham. The challenge which you have with people that don't want to cooperate with the contract, contact tracing becomes a real challenge. We haven't had any issues like that. So our team's been pretty good about that. So um so far, so good. But one of the challenges, though, that we do know we have, all of us do, is that when people congregate in town, maybe there's an event that occurs here, but we wouldn't necessarily ever know if they ever tested positive because we only get the information for our own residents.
But with contract tracing, wouldn't you be?
We still, we per, I personally wouldn't know, but it would be through the Mavens system that the health department could track that information down.
So how fast is, I guess, you know, the, the, I, I'm happy that there's rapid testing now. So I think the place in, in Dennis does the rapid testing. It's not, it's not, it's at a cost, I think.
Hundred thirty dollars maybe, yeah.
But I think that's key and to the stopping the spread.
No question.
So um the contract tracing as well, knowing you've been so, uh in direct contact with somebody who has been positive. So what is the timeline of that to happen? I know the state's working hard. They have people working on it, but from the time, is, is it a quick?
It is. I, I know from our point, like as soon as we get a test positive, the health department staff is right on that. They get, they get there really quickly on this. So the test results are like, to your point, though, if we can get them in within seventy-two hours, which is kind of like the goal now, that really helps things out because people, it's fresh in their mind and whatnot. But our staff, there's been, I mean, they are full out, straight out on this topic. So I feel pretty comfortable that, you know, I know Bruce is um, he's very stressed right now over this whole issue, as is his staff, but they're doing a really good job staying on top of it. So, yeah, it does occur pretty quick, though.
I think that's, that's huge in stopping the spread. So, thank you.
Mike, anything on COVID? Okay. Next item on the agenda is Board of Selectmen Goals.
Yeah, so as you know, the packet was like immense and it did not, the goals, the recent version of the goals did not make the online version, so I printed those there for you. We did get some public comment in the public comment box. I think there's three people sent some information to us. And we forwarded that information to you and the one that, one in particular that I sent a, or I handed out to you last time we had a meeting, was the commentary about um what the town should do on affordable housing. And I think this is, we're at a critical point in time in which um if wastewater progresses over the next twelve to eighteen months on Route twenty-eight, you'll find that there'll be great interest to do housing on that strip because the cost of getting into a project becomes dramatically more affordable once you have wastewater there. So there's different commentary that we've heard across from the different channels that we interact with. Some folks indicating that maybe we've done enough on twenty-eight, we need to reserve commercial property. I think in, when we discussed last meeting, also Matta Key's middle school site allows us to have an opportunity to do something really robust and unique to the Cape on over fifty-five. So I think from an administrative perspective, we need to have a dialogue and get some clear direction from the board as to what we should uh do for planning. We have a, you know, obviously, obviously a sum of money with the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh they're doing really well with uh their buy-down program and I think the trust members really have signaled to the administrator that we want to make sure that the buy-down program on mortgages continues, although the price to do that now is problematic because the cost of housing is getting to be very substantial. But certainly one of the ways we can help to give the board some uh direction on that is the visioning process that the town has a grant. We have to get moving on that. And that, and let the, let the folks in town, you know, have an opportunity to, you can hear from them as to what they think we should do in these different spots. So certainly I think that's a big topic for the future, um for our efforts. Uh the land acquisition piece that we just discussed now, um, you know, it would be interesting and we can certainly run this information down. As much as it is important to identify parcels of land available within a thousand feet of a well, I'd be more interested to know what the game plan is to deal with parcels that are within four hundred feet of a well so that we have a system in place to identify when those properties become available. And you might be better able to respond to that and do something more proactive. Obviously, the nitrate problem is not going away. So, so there's a lot of different complexities to that level that we certainly would need to factor in. If, if acquisition of property becomes part of a water strategy for clean water, um we clearly need to get some direction on that. And then as it relates to the water topic, I know in the next few weeks, we'll be real active with our partners over in Dennis and Harwich as it relates to getting the DHY operation, um, you know, back on some semblance of a track. So um we've got a few things in the works on that topic there, but, but the water issue and the housing issue clearly are, are big areas of concern for direction.
Comments?
I have a couple of comments. I think, I think um moving forward with visioning in terms of our goals is immensely important because we can sit here and think we know what the community wants, but it's so important to hear from them. So one of my, one of my questions is, I know we had been given a timeline before, which is probably all because of COVID not held to plan, and I'm not sure what our involvement is with that. But I, I was wondering if we have some type of uh it's kind of a hybrid of what we were doing and what we're doing now as far as us being here and bringing in the public through Zoom.
Yeah.
And having a, a more of a wider community conversation where perhaps we have the Zoom up here where we can interact with them, but they don't have to physically be here. I felt, I felt like there were a lot of positives to Zoom. I thought, I think a lot more people would be interested in tuning in and, you know, if they're shooting around the house, doing something, tune into what they, what they wanted. But I, I think we're going to get a lot more interaction from the outside if, if we are able to do that. And, you know, with the limited space in here anyway, I think it would be problematic to have that many people in, but I think it would be great, perhaps we're here and we have that. The other thing, as far as the plan, any of these planned new developments, I, obviously, I think we have the, the room in our schools at this point in time to not be concerned about that, but any of these new developments, especially the over fifty-five, add a burden to our, our first responders. And I think that as part of any of those uh plans, we need to consider what, how we're going to respond to them. I mean, we've added um, we've added a few of the, of them already and I'm, and I'm sure the, the runs have increased, so we have to be really careful about uh any, any of those congregate living or um complexes. I'm not sure if there is any increase to the new where, I forget the name of it, I'm sorry, where the Cavalier used to be. If there's an increase, please.
Oh, there's an increase, no question.
Please, if I, yeah, yeah, with common. So.
No question.
So I think we should review that because we, we should know with any other proposal coming forward, what the, what the increase is going to be. And I think the people of the, you know, we need to, we need to increase our services along with that. So there's got to be some plan. We can't keep adding this and not adding to our, to our, to our responses. So that's.
Good comments. Mike?
I generally agree with those comments. I think visioning is important and I think Tracy's idea to have input from the public by Zoom, you're probably going to get more of a response than the limited seating that would be available here, plus the inconvenience to people of, of coming down here and sitting through an agenda when at home, they can kind of monitor when they want to come in. The, the big concern that I have about the housing issue and the water infrastructure improvements is that um we, we have a, a fair amount of affordable housing going in on twenty-eight and my concern, and it's not a recent one, it's been a concern all along, is where do you do your commercial redevelopment? If you have residential housing taking up those locations on, on twenty-eight. Um I think it's time to start looking into other areas for development. Obviously, with the school projects, that could potentially open up some alternative sites. Um I don't have any fixed ideas. I'm just, you know, talking about in the abstract. Do we really want, you know, a series of affordable housing projects and say, this is it, this is what Yarmouth Commercial District is? I don't think we want to do that. So um I think we have to have more diverse planning when it comes to housing.
And if I, a question to start that clarity. So on the visioning aspect, if we were to do like a hybrid of some of the future meetings go forward and have like a particular early section of the meeting be dedicated to a Zoom activity so that we could lead a meeting in with this topic, you know, we're going to cover this aspect of the visioning for XYZ and that would allow the public to, to select on Stone's point, they can view in when it's convenient to them and then when, when, when that's over, they, they leave and we go on with regular business. I, I think to, to do that, we're, we're good with that. We would just need to come up with a menu of what's the topics for those different things and almost, I think, in that forum. Because traditionally what we were going to do is, is much like we did with Water Resources, is go into different pockets of the town to prospect out those contacts. In this environment, we're not likely to be able to do that. But certainly if we publish Zoom schedules like that, we probably get to the same point to some degree, maybe have a few small uh types of hearings because I think for some audience members in the town, those are things that they like to do as opposed to Zoom, but some hybrid approach. Is that kind of like something along the lines of what you were thinking?
Yeah, I think one of the things that we should do, Dan, is get, get, have a briefing to the board on what the game plan is now for visioning. And maybe what happens is there, the board can sort of provide some direction, at least, at least the things that we think we need to hear more from the public on.
Yeah, because it has changed dramatically since what we were, the whole concept has changed dramatically from what we were planning on doing.
So my, my own, my own view is I think we need to get, focus on that, get that figured out and then see how our involvement can factor in in a constructive way. I think what, what I'm, what we want to be able to do and accomplish in this, and I, and I've, and I've heard this in the community and I've even among board members, is that we want this vision to totally reflect what the people of Yarmouth envision as the, the future of the town. So we've got to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and with that in mind. So that, and, and I don't think in the process, we should be reluctant to put in front of people the challenges that we face. Right? If we want more affordable housing on Route twenty-eight, well then, here's, here is, here are the pros and cons of that. If we want to do more water supply protection, um here are the things that we need to be concerned about. I know in the last town that I served as an interim town administrator, the town, in the town of Brewster, the Brewster residents spoke loudly and clearly about clean water and groundwater protection. They liked the fact that they didn't have to invest in huge costly sewers and wastewater infrastructure and they wanted the town to do everything it could protect its drinking water supplies. So in that community, they protected and set aside open space for large areas around their wellfields. So I think what we need to do is, is to get a real understanding of where the priorities are of the people of the town. And that's why I think maybe in the next meeting or two, we figure out a time where you know, you and staff can come before the board and update us on what your thinking is and then we can have an exchange with the team in terms of our input and how maybe best to craft it or some of our suggestions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes perfect sense.
One of the thing I wanted to say is I know you commented briefly about the buy-down program in the, in the uh real estate market, which is difficult, but I think that the buy-down program is probably one of our better initiatives in terms of affordable housing because I like the way that it's spread out in the, in the communities and to the extent that we can hold on to that, I think that that's more of a reflection of what our, our what, what affordable housing should be. So.
Mike, you want to chime in on that?
No, I agree, I agree with that. Um like I said, I, you know, just speaking in the abstract without any concrete proposals of my own at this point in time. I think that that's what the community should be. It should be, there should be a more diverse approach. It shouldn't all be lining up on Route twenty-eight or it shouldn't all be lining up on Higgins Quill Road or any other place. It should be inter-dispersed throughout the community. I think that's the healthiest approach.
I agree with both of you. I think if they need a shout-out or they need some encouragement to continue to sustain the program, I think you're getting that feedback tonight. I totally endorse what Tracy and Mike have said. I think it's, 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 it's of all of the tools that you have in the toolbox, this is the one that should not disappear. This is the one that we should keep using and taking advantage of. Does that help?
That helps a lot. Thank you.
Good. All right. So we've gotten through Selectmen Goals. Unless there's something else on the goals, any other board member wants to?
No.
I think Dan's updated it. I think we can have a chance to go through it. I think we can revisit again. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't, I, I think we've, we've given them enough direction.
On the website, what we'll do is the bolden, like number one, number two, that's what'll appear. And on your Invisio reports, those action items underneath become your directories for keeping track on the Invisio platform. And that's how. And that's how we communicate too, so.
Not only that, from a user standpoint, this thing would just be too confusing and too voluminous to follow with all the sub-action items. It's.
Real granular.
I, I don't think people are going to really stay on that website long enough to go through this. Most people, they're going to look at, they want to look at the, the broader heading.
Yeah, no, no, understood.
We all kind of skim read those things when we go into websites.
Other than the C-VAC lease.
Yeah, other than the C-VAC lease.
All right.
I'm glad Tracy read that lease. I feel better already.
The interest of trying to at least stay on time, get, stay on time here. Let me move on to the next item, which is board and committee actions, which, which I'll get into right away here. I'm looking for a motion to reappoint Julie Maccabee as a regular member to the Yarmouth Historical Commission for a three-year term running through July 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, carries unanimously. The, there are three, I'm, I'd like a motion to reappoint Beverly Bakand, Robert Heislop, and Sam Lawrence as alternate members to the Yarmouth Historical Commission for one-year terms running through July 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. The next item is Melanie Baron. This is a, I'd like a motion to appoint Melanie Baron as a regular member to the Yarmouth Historical Commission, an appointment for a three-year term running through July 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries unanimously. And that is it for committee items. The next is.
Upcoming agenda review.
Agenda review. So Dan, let's just for the moment focus on August 11th and make sure we're clear in terms of what's going to happen at our next meeting. I see here sort of tentatively laid out is the hearing for, I can't spell that name, Neal Kant Package Corporation. So we've got a.
Where is that, Dan? Do you know?
I don't offhand know where that is.
Paradise Wine and Spirits, anybody know?
I don't know.
What are you looking at me for? I, maybe.
I was actually looking for Eric. I couldn't choose.
No.
No, 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 just the spirit is. Okay, so we don't, that, is that still on?
Yeah, so I, I can check on that with Linda Hill. These are advertisement sensitive typically.
Yeah, they have to go forward.
All right, what about the Cove?
Right, so the same thing with the Cove, these, but, but I have a document I have to send to you relative to the COVID. It's a complaint document, so you might want to take action on that.
Keep an eye out for that in our email?
Yes, that'll go out to you tomorrow. Yeah.
Is the drive-in site group going to be able to update us on this question of feasibility?
I believe Kathy Williams was here. I believe that they are working on a document for you to get a little bit of insight into that.
They're going to meet, I think, next week. I think on the 4th, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I don't know how much they're going to be able to do in one meeting and come to us a, a week later and.
I, I think what they're going to do is revisit the file where they're at, what the hurdles are. I mean, clearly today's day and age, we, we learned what the cost would be to do a little bit of work at Bass Hole, you know, so.
Yeah.
This is pretty ma, this is pretty massive in the magnitude of disruption of salt marsh, you know, so.
Okay, so there, hopefully that, that won't take too much time.
So the, the drive-in movie itself, Adam Epstein will have.
That'll be on.
That'll be on, that's correct.
What about a visioning update? Can we do?
I'll see what I can do.
He's on the 11th, yeah.
Yeah, Adam's supposed to go for the 11th. He's not on there yet, that's correct.
He's not on there yet. Okay, so that's a fourth hearing?
Yeah, and there's, there's also maybe a need, a need related to land acquisition executive session for you.
Yep.
I'll see what I can do about coming up with a game plan for the, um, visioning.
Yes.
Okay.
That would already make that a pretty full night.
I, I think that's it.
Yeah. Okay.
The Cove might be a little interesting to look at only because interestingly arcade machines, arcades are not available to be open right now. So even though I'm not sure if this is add 10 games to a newly designed room to give them, like the social distancing, but arcades in general, I spoke to Bruce Murphy about this last week, they're not allowed to open. So I'll look more into that as it relates to what they're trying to do there.
Technically an arcade though, the coin thing, I mean, maybe they're dispersed. I mean, what, what constitutes? I know, but what constitutes an arcade? One machine, 10 machines?
Slot machines aren't interestingly enough. They're okay, right? Video games aren't, yeah, so.
Are there any other agenda items we should talk about for the next meeting on the 11th? Are we done?
I think we're done.
Okay, good. I agree. So what about the 25th, Dan? How does that?
So the 25th, I've been working with the finance committee. I have a meeting with them on Thursday to get some key discussion points out from them as it relates to what they would like to engage the board in at a potential like a half an hour workshop on the 25th. I think, I think like tonight, you heard some interesting situations with the challenges in front of us. I heard, I sent an email to the people in charge to find out what that is for tomorrow, so. But I, I think, you know, there's been like a longstanding tradition in town, to the extent possible, to pay things in cash. And I think, you know, one of the shortcomings to that is if your cash doesn't keep up with what you've got in front of you, you run into problems. And, and I think that's a rational philosophical debate. The other thing that's on their mind is a couple of different longstanding kick the can items that they'd like to be able to at least come up with a working idea with you as to how we might consider financing those. There's the other one about, the, the other big one is that the overlay, real estate overlay accounts and what we would go forward, because we've got to start building the budget. All of this is with the idea that the budget policy guidance from the board is set to be voted or decided on in September. And then I give the instruction surely they're after, believe it or not, that's where we're at. But I also think that to check in with finance as it relates to what fall town meeting looks like and what some of the articles that we can gather some consensus on as it relates, because there, many of them have massive financial consequences associated to them.
That's the 25th.
I'm going to try to keep it recapsulated to high level ideas so that when you go do, do the budget instructions, you have a clear sense of where they're coming from.
Well, we've also talked about coastal, the coastal project, right?
That's a big part of it. That's absolutely part of it. That's correct. You know, how to finance them.
Yeah, I just want to know when we know about, how it's going. Who is the staff personnel appointed to wastewater point?
For us? Yeah, that'll end up becoming to some, well, I could let Jeff Colby maybe potentially answer that. No? Is it Phil Simone has been appointed?
That was a good one, Jeff.
So, so that's one of those things what, yeah, so we're going to need to work with the finance department to get some staff assistance on that. Rich is still available as a, as, as needed if we have specific situations. Clearly one of the challenges.
Our town meeting is going to come up quick and we need to make sure someone cuts that.
Yeah.
Bring Rich in on the financial side once we find out where Harwich is.
Well, one of the challenges though is forecasting. We, we were pretty good with traditional forecasting local revenue receipts. And that's really kind of on its ears right now, upside down. So, so it'll make it difficult. I think by October, late October, we'll know what the first quarter was. We had a fabulous first quarter last year in local receipts, and it got us through to the finish line.
I understand.
But this first quarter.
I think if we're going to do wastewater in the fall, we need to have an updated cost recovery plan, and we need to know what the deal is with Harwich. That's the big question. So I think that complicates everything.
So I've reached out to Dennis to work with.
Get our Ouija board out for Harwich, right?
Town council there to, to see what we, how we move forward with their town council on, on the negotiation on that.
Speaking of the finance committee, aren't, aren't there a number of openings on, on finance?
You did some interviews though, aren't you?
There have been some candidates floated amongst the.
Okay, so that's already in progress. That's good.
That's being discussed, yeah. And, and there's a, just a public service announcement right now. If anybody watching is interested in serving on the finance committee, now is the time to get your talent bank application in because we have some vacancies and we're looking for some people to participate. So thanks for bringing that up. So on agenda items, is there anything else?
No, that's it. I got, I'm, I've, I'll, for the next iteration of this on the 11th, you'll have some items from through September because I pulled up the old agendas for that, so.
Okay.
We're moving in that direction.
Any other board member suggestions on agenda items? Are we pretty much done?
No, I just, the only other thing is, and I know everybody's busy, but perhaps there's something that could be done from home. I'm not sure what our IT people are doing, but updating the website.
We've been working on that. Yeah, I've been.
In our minutes.
Yeah. So, so videos are, should be going up to the latest. We had a little bit of a glitch with this new equipment, but.
Was there an issue with last week's?
There was. We do have a, a video version of that. It'll be going up shortly though on the internet. And I spoke to my staff about getting back on track with minutes, and they're going to start catching up again, so.
Yep, good. Thanks Tracy. Mike?
I took your thunder right there, didn't I?
Yeah, that's been my, my big issue is, well, the thing is, is it's about communication, right? How do we communicate with the public if the public doesn't know what we're doing?
Well, it's just something changed on the website because they used to post our agenda at one place and now it's under the calendars.
Right, exactly. Lots of changes. I couldn't believe on Channel 18, I actually, there was an old World War II movie on our Channel 18 last week.
Really?
I was stunned. Yeah, I was wondering why the heck.
You sure you had it on the right channel?
Yeah, I had it on 18, and it was the Yarmouth channel because you could barely see anything on the screen. It was that fuzzy analog.
It was a Kurt Hel movies, wasn't it?
So I don't know what that was about. No, but you're, I think we need to shortly put, put, put communications back on the agenda. But I've been trying to hold off on that for a while because we've got a lot of other important things that we need to deal with as well.
Was it any good?
I watched it for 15 minutes, waiting for.
They've been watching this?
Wait, waiting for the calendar to kick in or a select board meeting to kick in, something related to municipal government to kick in, but nothing happened. So I don't know if that was sabotage from another vendor or.
Oh, I, we're working on, we have a vendor working on the carousel, but I will say that I, I should be able to have some sort of Comcast contract update for you by the 25th, so.
Yeah, I think, I think also on that agenda item, we're going to talk, I, I'd like to talk about making sure that we have the Comcast revenues for media and communication and IT, not for other.
Yeah, oh, no, understood.
The school committee's meeting on Thursday this week. So, and I know the, the school department was before the Dennis Board of Selectmen tonight, I think, talking about some of their reopening plans. She's starting to, they're starting to unfold some of it. As you know, the DESC voted to allow an extra couple of weeks before school started, September 16th, I think was the date. So.
Would you want to see like, see if Carol or Ken could address this on the 25th maybe about what reopening would look like?
Well, I think the difficult part is the school committee hasn't taken a position. So I think that once they go through the process, they have a really big committee of different people with input. And once the school committee makes, adopts something, then I think we can. But I, I'm not sure what they could do now.
I'll put a placeholder out there.
It hasn't been approved by anybody, but there's a lot of potentials. And, I mean, we're looking forward to it from, from, hopefully by September 16th, which we know will come fast. And there are a lot of people that are trying to make plans for the fall that are unable to right now.
I got it. All right.
Just interest in the busing scenario. That's.
Isn't that going to be left up district by district?
District by district, yeah.
So back to your point about employees that have kids in the school district, you might have some of them that have the option of having the kids back in school, others that don't.
Or back at home, yeah. There's a couple of different, three different scenarios potentially, yeah.
So they have to provide the state three, but that doesn't mean they have to choose all three, correct? I mean, they could get them approved. I, I think from what I understood that the scenarios were, you know, in different situations, they need to be able to move quickly if, you know, the, the numbers increase and they need to go to remote. I think their goal would be to get people, get them back in.
My understanding is there is a virtual opportunity for any parent that wants to have that, all virtual. That'll be a standard offering. The second one is related to, do you go one week on, one week off? Or two weeks on, two weeks off? That's the one I think that's going to be the negotiating point. Because you can't be all things to everybody, but one week on or two weeks on, that determines how you set up your class, how you run your buses and things of that nature, you know, so.
So when are we proposing to bring that up?
Maybe the 25th of August. I'll put a placeholder there. See if they're ready. If they're not, they're not.
I just want to move things along here and getting on. So.
The election is the first, so no meeting that day?
Got it.
Yeah.
How about upcoming, well, we did the agenda review, individual items? Tracy?
I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates. They had a successful graduation. We were fortunate that we didn't have what some of the other communities had, had to cancel theirs last minute, which was, had to have been devastating for those kids the night before. Falmouth and, and I think Nossette too.
Nossette, too.
These were both canceled, so.
Mike?
I, I'd like to just reiterate Tracy's best wishes to all the kids and their families. It must be tough in terms of, you know, what their expectations were and what they had to settle for basically. But I commend everybody that did their best to try to give the kids some kind of a graduation ceremony because I think that was, that was very important to them. Certainly was, was far better than not having anything. And, and as Tracy said, they were, I guess, they were giving up a lot still. They were lucky in the sense that there were cancellations in other school districts. And thankfully, that didn't happen to, to the DY kids, so, so that, so that was a good thing. And that's, that's all I have to say right now.
Okay, I'm not going to add anything. Town administrator items.
And we have a consent agenda. It's got an event for the Lions Club, permission for that, their White Kane fundraiser. We have some donations. And also we have a very interesting donation, Fisherman statue. That's presently now on display at the recreational headquarters. And it's, we don't really know what the final home for the fisherman will be, but we're certainly taking in locations. And we talked about, we're thinking about Packet Lanning would be one too, yeah, so. But he's there now, so.
Well, I moved that consent agenda.
Yes. All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I think we should have a public input in terms of a name. We should have a naming of this.
Sure, the name of the fisherman.
Put that on the website. We're soliciting names for a name for.
I think Kurt would be a good name.
That was donated by Tom Simeon, so. Yeah, thank you to Tom. Tom Simeon is his name.
Yes, I think asking for names and places would be great.
Yeah.
And what is it, a wood?
Made out of metal.
Metal?
That's great.
Yeah.
So thank you. So do we have a, we had a mo, do you want to second it now, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it carries.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next item is, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jeff, and?